If he's here, he's here. And then the pledge will be followed by Supervisor Goodman.
Good morning. Let's go to the Lord in prayer. Father, we thank you for this day, Lord. We thank you for this great, wonderful time, Lord, that you've given to us the opportunity, Lord, to come together, Lord, that we would be able to open our hearts, our minds, our all, Father, unto you. Lord, we thank you, Father, for this wonderful country, this land that we live in, Father, Lord, that you've given us so many great privileges. Father, as we approach your throne of grace with a humble heart, we ask, heavenly Father, that you would examine and see if there's anything in our hearts that needs to be removed. Father, that you would cleanse us, or that we would be pure before your throne. We ask, heavenly Father, that this morning you would be with each and every one of us, Lord, especially your servants, Father, here, that are the supervisors for this great county, Father. We just ask, heavenly Father, Lord, that you would open their hearts, their minds, that you would give them guidance, give them wisdom, Father, the strength of character in all things, Father, that they need, Lord, to lead us, Father, in your work. We give you, Father, our obedience, Father. And we, Lord, we just thank you, Father, for the example, Lord, even that you gave us, Lord, according to your word, Father, in the book of Deuteronomy. Lord, as you spoke to Moses, Lord, and you said that if we fully obey you, Lord God, and carefully follow all of your commands that you give us, Lord, that you, Father, our God, will set us high above all the nations of the earth. Father, today, I pray that we would be faithful in all things, that all our words, our actions, bring honor, bring glory to your holy name. Help us that we would not be stiff-necked and obstinate, that we'd follow and obey our leaders that watch over us, because they will have to give an account for their work, Father. As you have told us, Father, in your word in the book of Hebrews. Father, we just pray that this morning, Lord, this day would be blessed, Lord, that these proceedings, Father, would be blessed. Give guidance, give wisdom, give honor and glory, Father, unto all things in you, Father, in Jesus Christ. Lord, may this be on all to your name, in Jesus' precious name. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll call this regular meeting to order. Do we have Supervisor Kavanaugh on the phone?
No, Chairman Searcy, he has not joined the meeting yet.
Okay. So we'll go right into call to the public. And of course, there's a light up there, which you'll have three minutes. You'll see a yellow light. And then, once the red light's there, we need you to finish it up. So that's how that works. I have one so far, and it's Barry McCann.
Good morning, Chairman Searcy, Board of Supervisors, staff and friends. My name's Barry McCann from the city of Maricopa. I first like to thank and congratulate Supervisors Goodman and Supervisors McClure for their testimony at the Arizona State Capitol. President Madison said that government is necessary because mankind is imperfect, but there must be a constitutional constraints on political authority. We've been experiencing grandstanding because of lack of action. Action is the antidote for despair. We must collaborate as Americans in order to save democracy. The late Senator from Arizona, Senator John S. McCain III, my cousin, said, "People want to win without help from across the aisle." The political polarization will always weaken our democracy and create havoc in our America while endangering our safety and freedoms. But I have one question that I haven't been able to figure out yet. What are we going to do with the homeless that was not homeless before COVID came out? Thank you.
I don't have any other requests, but if anybody would like to do call to the public right now, now's your time. Not seeing any, we will. Roberto Ravelas.
Roberto Ravelas, resident of Gold Canyon. Truth matters, word matters. Mr. Chairman, these days we're witnessing the unraveling of the propaganda campaign within Fox News and the propaganda spewed by Arizona's former Attorney General Mark Bernovich, a big lie propaganda campaign that's brought us to an unprecedented level of distrust in our voting system, a campaign that victimized all of us. Distrust that we've heard expressed within this Board of Supervisors venue, calls for purging our voter registration rolls, for replacing vote tabulating systems, denouncing vote by mail, distrust sowed by everyday citizens, and unfortunately, by leaders of the challenged, grand old party. Thankfully, a majority of Democratic voters, independent voters, and principled Republicans outside of Pinal County voted their belief in our system and elected into office believers in and practitioners of truth-telling. Truth-tellers like our new Attorney General, Chris Mays, who a few days ago released previously undisclosed AG investigation reports that investigators, quote, "did not uncover any criminality or fraud," unquote, in the 2020 election. Nevertheless, despite that investigation's conclusion, big lie advocates within the GOP-controlled legislature are still pushing so-called election reforms on the unsubstantiated premise of, quote, "serious vulnerabilities," involving signature verification and transportation of ballots from dropbox locations. On the national scene, Fox News Executive Chairman Rupert Murdoch recently disclosed his courtroom testimony that he had seen little evidence of widespread voter fraud as claimed by Donald Trump and whose claims Murdoch characterized as "bullshit and damaging," unquote. Furthermore, Murdoch testified that Fox News hosts Sean Hannity, Lou Dobbs, Maria Bartiromo not only provided an outlet for baseless claims of voter fraud, but they also endorsed those untruthful claims. Mr. Chairman, I agree with Attorney General Mays that the people of Arizona had a right to know before the 2022 election that the big lie fraud claims are baseless and that the AG's office and all of us, including all Pinal County elected officials, have a solemn duty to acknowledge those lies as we begin a new election season. Optimist that I am, I challenge all county officials to amplify the AG investigations finding among our county's voters as we seek to reestablish trust in Pinal County's elections. To do less is to keep the big lie alive. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone else? We need your name and basic address.
Boots Hocks, from Casa Grande, Arizona. You know, we could believe everything we're told, or we could search our hearts and go to God. The gentleman that was just up here believes all the investigations that come forth. I don't believe them all. It's just like Mallorca says, "Our border is secure." President Biden says, "Our border is secure." But people come across that border like a river flowing. Who do we believe? Those are officials, and they're telling us something, but we know it isn't true. Somebody could come up here and speak and say whatever they want to, and I understand that. But look at all the people that knows it not to be true. I just listened to something the other day that really upset me. And that was the fact that Mark Fincham was denied a job here. I understand he didn't meet the qualifications to the letter, but you're getting a man of integrity, a man with a master's degree, a man with a bachelor's of arts degree, a man that spent time in law enforcement, a man that served this state for eight years in the legislature, and he wasn't qualified to be deputy of elections? This is crazy. We need to look at things with open minds. The only thing I could think of why we wouldn't hire somebody like that is because we know that they would find stuff or they would come forward with stuff that wouldn't look good on us, because we need people like that in there. We need the whistleblowers, just like the FBI is so perfect. But look at all the people that's coming forward on all of that. There's a lot of stuff that investigations are done on, and don't believe everything you hear. Start thinking with your mind and start praying to God that he'll make you a little bit wiser. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you. So we're now scheduled to go to executive session, but we're going to wait for County Attorney Volkmer to arrive, and we will then go. So we're going to proceed on to item number four, which is discussion of a proclamation for Fair Housing Month. Marshall Williams. Michelle Williams.
My name is Michelle Williams. I'm here to read the proclamation for fair housing. Whereas it be known by the Pinal County Board of Supervisors, proclamation for housing month, Marshall.
We need to discuss it first, because we may not want to approve this. So tell us what it's about and why we should approve this proclamation. Then, if we do, then we'll read it.
Okay. It is about, this is my first time, so don't embarrass me. Okay, I'm a little nervous. But it is in regards to, you know, making sure that when someone, you know, applies for housing, that they're getting equal treatment in regards to housing, that they're not being discriminated against. We want to make known throughout Pinal County that this is something that all citizens should be aware of for the month of April when it comes to fair housing.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions or comments? Then I will ask for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve item number four as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We now have that proclamation, and we want to hear it.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. By the Pinal County Board of Supervisors, proclamation for Fair Housing Month, April 2023, whereas the Civil Rights Act of 1968, commonly known as the Federal Fair Housing Act and the Fair Housing Amendment Act of 1988 prohibits discrimination in the sale, rental, leasing, and financing of housing and/or land to be used for the construction or housing or in the provisions of brokerage services on the basis of race, color, religion, sex, disability, familial status, or national origin. And whereas the 1968 and 1988 Federal Fair Housing Acts declare that it is a national policy to ensure equal opportunities in housing and whereas the month of April has traditionally been designated as Fair Housing Month in the United States. Now, therefore, we, the Pinal County Board of Supervisors, do hereby proclaim April 2023 as Fair Housing Month and urge all citizens of the county to comply with and show their support for the letter and spirit of Fair Housing Act, proclaimed this first day of March 2023. Thank you.
Thank you. County managers report.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, board members. I usually don't come up here, but I do want to show a couple of resources to everybody, so we could see you on the screen. But just prior to that, I did want to announce that our Pinal County Workforce Development Board was selected as the winner of the 2023 Trailblazer Award by the National Association of Workforce Boards. So this was announced yesterday. Thank you to James Smith and Joel Milman for that. And I'll read what this award is about. This association recognizes the most innovative and impactful work being done by workforce development boards and their partners across the nation. Pinal County Workforce Development Board is the winner of the WIOA, which is the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act, Trailblazer Award for its continual assessment, alignment, and advancement of core workforce development services, which has maximized the community impact of the workforce development board's work, producing entirely new training, recruiting, and career opportunities for workers and employers in Pinal County. So congratulations to that board, which you worked with on their strategic plan, and congratulations to their staff. So this is our home webpage, and I just wanted to make everybody aware of a couple of new resources that are out. On the front page, if you go to maps, there are several that you can use regarding air quality, our comp plan, delinquent taxes, land status, land use, et cetera. The new one that we have is this economic development asset tool. So thank you to James Smith, and thank you to Courtney Gully, and thank you to Sarah Hess in GIS, who had worked hard on getting this. There's more that we can add to this map, but it's a great start. So it's an interactive map, and if site selectors or any prospects looking to land in Pinal County wanted to do some research on their own, they can use any of these layers, if you want to call them, which are information that we would lay on top of a map. And, for example, these are major employers in and around the area. Rail is always one of interest. So we have a rail layer that we can put on here, airports, community colleges, parks. And so usually the resources or lifestyle amenities that they're looking for when they're looking to land a site. There's roadways, here's rail. And when you press on them, they pop up, so you can see, obviously, this is a little far, but if you're working on your computer, you can see pretty good opportunity zones, which have federal tax benefits, industrial parks. And then ozone, air quality is one that's a big one for users if they're emitting and they want to make sure they're in a certain area related to that. So this is a very helpful tool for site selectors and for us. And there's others that have shown interest in adding their layers, like utilities and whatnot. We'll build on this as we go forward. And thank you as well to Pinal Partnership and those involved there who's helped contribute to this map. And another tool that we have on our website or resource that we have is under the events page. And we try to let people know what's going on in the county so that they can take advantage of and enjoy these events. So near the bottom of the webpage, as you scroll down, there's an event that will list some of the upcoming events. But there, if you click View All, you go to a calendar. And if we wanted to look at the month that we're in, you just hit Month, and then you have a calendar of the events. And then, like, for example, we have the Florence Music Festival going on right now, this coming pretty soon next weekend. And if you click on that and hit More Details, it'll link you either to the website or a brochure that will give you more information on that event. One of them that's coming up here pretty soon that everyone should be aware of is Women's Pro Golf Tournament, the LPGA, and that's going to be at the Superstition Mountain Golf and Country Club. That's a major event that had been here years back and has come back. So we're happy to have them here. That's going to be the 23rd through the 26th, starts on a Thursday, final round on the Sunday. So that's out there for anybody that would like to use any of these resources. That's all I have. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Purchasing Division report.
Chairman, before we present the purchasing division report, just for the record, if I can announce that Supervisor Kavanaugh is on the line. Supervisor Kavanaugh?
Yes.
Tiara.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Vice Chair, members of the board. I am Tiara Peterson, purchasing manager for Pinal County. This is your purchasing report for March 1st, 2023, with an action item to approve a budget amendment for the elections project. First, the board has requested to approve the following contract award, RFP 232928, for federal lobbyist services. We recommend Capital Strategies LLC be awarded a contract beginning March 28, 2023, and this contract will be used by the county manager's office. Next, the board is requested to approve the following contract amendments, RFP 204126 for towing services for PCSO. We recommend approval of amendment number four to exercise the optional extension period from March 15, 2023 through March 14, 2024, with the following suppliers, Asecure Towing LLC, Absolute Towing and Recovery, Apache Sands, Axel Towing and Impound LLC, Catalina Towing and Recovery, C.L. King Towing, DNS Towing, Eddie's Towing, Inc., Elite Towing LLC, Hughes Towing, K&amp;R Towing and Management, Inc., Night Towing LLC, Mammoth Towing and Service, Phoenix Metro Towing, Santan Valley Towing, Secured Right Towing, Southwest 24-Hour Towing, Star Towing, and Stay Up Towing LLC. The contract is used by the Sheriff's Department. RFP 223226 for Public Health Staffing. We recommend approval of amendment number one to exercise the optional extension period beginning March 16, 2023, with Landsoft, Inc. and Trifact, Inc. This contract is used by Public Health. Next, the board is requested to approve the following cooperative purchases. Requisition number 166434 with ESP Modular Manufacturing in the amount of $373,483.44 for a modular relocation project for the Sheriff's Department. Requisition 166701 with FCI Constructors in the amount of $2,091,700 for initial supplies for the Elections Building, and that is used by the Facilities Department. Requisition 166712 for Corporate Interior Systems, Inc. in the amount of $407,745.98 for office spaces for public defense and public fiduciary building, second floor, used by the Facilities Department. Requisition number 166719 for Corporate Interior Systems, Inc. in the amount of $464,011.31 for office spaces for public defense, public fiduciary building, used by Facilities. And requisition 166720 for Swan Architects in the amount of $1,685,837 for architectural services for the Elections Building, used by the Facilities Department. And finally, the board is requested to approve a budget amendment for the Elections Project. We recommend a fiscal year 2022-2023 budget amendment to transfer budget appropriation up to $19,663,200 from the general funded one-time capital fund, $10 million from the American Rescue Plan, $2,933,968 from local assistance and tribal consistency funding for purposes of design and construction of the Elections Building. And the total estimated to complete the project is $32 million. Will be completed in fiscal year 2023-2024. And that concludes your purchasing report with an action item to approve the budget amendment for March 1st, 2023.
Are there any comments or questions?
Just one of the things that I just wanted to bring to everybody's attention when it comes to the last item on the Elections Building. There's other amenity, another county services that's going to be offered in that location as well that will do a lot with the Recorder's Office, such as early registration, early voting, things of that nature. So it's more than just of what is going to happen within the Elections Department, but it's all going to be a service that's going to be centered around elections. So I just wanted to make sure that everybody's aware of that.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, I'll ask for a motion.
Mr. Chair, with that being said, I'd like to recommend that we approve the purchasing report dated March 1st, 2023, as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
I'm sorry. Chairman, before we move on, if we can just state inclusive of the actual budget amendment, because it's two separate actions in one item.
There's a budget amendment.
Okay. So, yes. Follow the instructions, is what you're telling me? Okay. It's like being at home again. Okay, Mr. Chair, I'll start over, if that's okay. I'd like to recommend that we approve as presented the March 1st, 2023 purchasing division report inclusive of the budget amendment.
I'll second. Okay. All in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. So is there another motion? Okay, that did them both. Okay. All right. Thank you. Which brings us up to legislative report from Supervisor Miller, if there is one. And will there always be one, Steve? Or sometimes there's just not much going on? Or what do you think?
There's always something going on. Let me be clear. But if I can, just verbally, I, and I, I think everybody receives these emails from Penny Adams at CSA. You can review them, the actions that were taken. I think there were 13, yeah, 13 last week that we reviewed. All opposed, except for one, which is monitoring or working with the legislator to rework some language. This week is a pretty slow week up there as far as interacting. There's no more committee hearings or anything. It's crossover week, where, you know, they're trying to, they're passing in the House of Origin, and then we'll be sending it to the opposite House. So the stuff in the House of Representatives go to the Senate, and stuff in the Senate will go to the House. Then there'll be another round of testifying in the opposite chamber. And then everything starts really firming up what the language looks like on these bills. So anyway, this is called the crossover week, and that's kind of where we're at. We still have a handful of legislation that will be looked at on this Friday. But I think it goes, if you read this and you see how many were opposed, of the 13, 12 were opposed, one's monitoring. It shows that we spend a lot of time on defense, because it's the stuff that is unfunded mandate-type of legislation that they try to pass down to the county. And so that's really what we're looking at there. So if I, unless you have any questions on a specific bill, I'll try and answer them, but that's this week's report.
But in the future, for instance, when they take recess in a few months, then there may not necessarily be.
Oh, yeah. And, you know, as we get further into the season, there will be less and less to report on. It'll be more about what has been passed in both houses and sent to the governor, and then we'll also see how many get signed. So, but yeah, it's shrinking as far as the volume of bills to be reviewed on a weekly basis. And at some point, yeah, it turns out to be.
You mentioned the CSA, and the average citizen may not know what that is, and so they wouldn't have access to those emails. So let them know what kind of group that is and how they help us out.
Sure. And thank you. My apologies for not explaining. The CSA is the County Supervisors Association. You can type that in in your web search, and you'll find, all of this same information is available to the general public. But CSA is the organization that all the counties belong to, and they advocate for certain legislation that benefits counties. And as I said, we spend a lot of time on defense, because there's always legislation that's being presented that actually ends up being a cost to us. And we, if they want it, if they want us to do it, we want them to pay for it. So anyway, but that's, CSA is a fantastic organization. It represents all 15 counties, and I think it's a great collaboration for the benefit of the citizens of Arizona, to be perfectly honest with you. So, and I am happy and pleased that you allow me to sit on this legislative policy committee.
Thank you. All right. Before we move on, is there any command staff here from Pinal County Sheriff? Okay. I was going to pull an item. Okay. I was going to pull an item if they were. I wanted them to explain something, but since they are not here, I will ask for a motion on the consent agenda.
Chairman, before we ask for that motion, if we can just confirm that there is no one here that would like to pull any of the consent agenda items?
Okay. As the county clerk said, is there anything that anyone would like to pull? Seeing none, I'll now ask for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to pass the consent agenda, A through, what do we have here? AJ. As presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that carries.
Excuse me. I just received a text that, you know, the county attorney is on his way over to the meeting now. So if at any time you want to go ahead and break it to set up for the executive session, because we do have to get the outside attorney on call, on the phone to get on. So just to let you know that he is on his way over.
But that could be several minutes. There's no need to break right now. Yes. Okay. So we're now going to go to item number nine, which is always exciting. We're going to recess this meeting and go to the flood, flood control. And there's no, so is there a motion on the consent agenda on flood control?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to, did we ask if anybody wanted anything pulled?
Does anyone want anything pulled from flood control? Don't see any.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda items A through D as presented on the Pinal County Flood District, Flood Control District.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And the ayes have that. We'll then go out of flood control and go into Public Health. And on Public Health, we actually have a call to the public. Someone would like to comment on, on something. I have Dave Coward.
Mr. Coward would like to speak to item number two. Is that correct? So if we can go ahead and take the actual motion on consent, item number one, because we do have consent one as well.
Can we have that motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve item number one of the Pinal County Public Health District, which is Consent A.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? And the ayes have that. Now, Mr. Coward, the item you want to pull.
Thank you, Chairman Sertie. I, just a brief comment. Several months ago that you guys passed approval of some special funds for the, the Health Services Department to, that were funds that came as far as the COVID pandemic, and the funds were to be used to do outreach, to get people vaccinated or whatever. And I've noticed that our vaccination rate in Pinal County has been stuck at 56% for seven or eight months, if not longer. And I'm just wondering if those funds were used to do outreach, to get more people vaccinated. It doesn't look like it's happening. So I just wanted to throw that out to see if there's any accountability for those expenditure of those funds. That's all.
Okay. Can, is Marissa Mendoza, would you address that?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Vice Chairman, Members of the Board. I'm Marissa Mendoza, the interim Director for Public Health. I believe that those funds have been used. As you know, vaccine is optional. We have it available at all of our clinics pretty much every day of the week. So anyone that is interested in a vaccine can come get a vaccine with, with very little action on their part. All they have to really do is show up. I don't believe that that's covered under these agenda items. That might be under a different grant. I need Cory. Cory. Cory Redden, Deputy Director for Public Health. She might have some more information on that.
Good morning. Cory Redden, Deputy Director of Public Health. As far as the, the immunization, we have an immunization grant that pays and supplements for outreach for vaccination and vaccine. The particular contracts up for an amendment are the ELC grants for K through 12 and for expansion, and ELC stands for Enhanced Laboratory Detection. So these funds, they're separate, they have a separate scope of work and deliverables, but they also include outreach for COVID testing, for education on vaccination as well. They kind of overlap a little bit. And as Ms. Mendoza stated, we, we make this optional for people, and it is available in all of our clinics. And there are several other grants that help us with this vaccination outreach and opportunity, opportunity to administer the vaccine.
For discussion purposes, you said there's education on the vaccine, and the numbers seem to be split 50-50. Is there any education to the other extreme that is the vaccine safe in? Because there seems to be news breaking on that all the time. Anybody that watches a lot of news, you'll see a lot of, so are they given both sides?
Thank you, Chairman Sertie. Yes, they are given options. They, there are times, and I've stated this before, that we may not provide a vaccine to somebody who wants it because they may have a contraindication to receiving it. So we do a full screening on every client for every vaccine if they are able to receive the vaccine safely.
Okay. Thank you. Any more questions? Yes. Mr. Miller.
Thank you, Chairman. Just real quick, can you give me an example of how you would outdo outreach? I mean, is it in the mail? Is it on TV? What, what, what medium are you using for outreach?
Chairman Sertie, Supervisor Miller, we do a full gamut of different ways to educate. So we have our website. We have our social media platforms. We also go to various community events to, to provide that one-on-one, in-person education. We also have, on a couple of our grants, we also will use our community resources, such as the Pinal Hispanic Council, to also educate. And they've been all over the county doing that as well. And that's a big deliverable for them, and we couldn't do it without them either. So those are the opportunities we, we have.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that. Supervisor Kavanaugh, do you want to weigh in?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would echo your sentiment that there are some concerns about the vaccine that without contraindications, where a patient shouldn't get the vaccine. Perfectly healthy people are taking the vaccine and developing myocarditis. And I think our Public Health Department should do the best they can to research that and fully inform people of those risks. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. If no more question or discussion, I'll ask for a motion on that other item.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve item number two as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? And the ayes have it. We will now-
Oh, you said that item three.
No, I need three.
Item three on that. Where do I have that? I'm in the wrong. I don't even have flood. Oh, it's right here. I don't have item three. There it is. Item number three, discussion and disapproval of intergovernmental agreement with, so we need Cory again? Or Marissa?
Marissa and Cory. So this is another ELC funding grant. It is getting an amendment to change the end date to July 31, 2023. And this grant provides us the ability to do telemedicine for K through 12 students who might have a behavioral health concern related to COVID. So if they have anxiety, stress, or loss related to COVID, these funds allow us to provide support for those children.
Is that through, I imagine every school has a school nurse. Would that be through them, or would they do it on their own?
The schools do refer their children to the behavioral health specialists. I'm not sure who at the school.
Chairman Sertie, if I can add, there are various different ways that they can get that linkage to care, because we don't want that to be a barrier, that they have to go to the school nurse, or some of the schools do not have a school nurse. So it is a representative of the school. It could be the principal. It could be administrative staff. And then they also are provided that information that they could directly contact telemedicine.
Okay. Any questions or comments?
I just-
Yes.
Just, you know, how involved are the parents on this? I mean, we talk about the children and everything else. Are the parents in, are they incorporated in all this? I was, I'm, I'm hoping the right answer, but I just want to make sure that everybody knows what that answer is.
I think what you mean is you don't really want a third grader reaching out for something without-
Well, or at least without mom or dad knowing what's going on.
Okay. I agree.
Chairman Sertie, Supervisor Goodman, absolutely, the parents are given that information, and they are the one that provides that connection, where it may be both the parent and the child as a part of that mental health, behavioral health service delivery.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, I'll ask for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve item number three as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And the ayes have that.
Aye.
That finishes Public Health. We will now go into, I'm going to go back into the regular session, and then recess it to go into executive session.
Motion.
Mr. Chair.
For that? Yes, I'll ask for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we go into executive session.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We're in executive session. Okay, yeah. Call us back into session. We have Supervisor Kavanaugh on the line. And if you recall, we skipped two and three, so we're going to go back to item number three. And that is Kent Volkmer. Chris Keller.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Chairman, Members of the Board, this item concerns acknowledging a joint defense agreement for outside counsel to handle the matter that was discussed in executive session. Just requires formal approval from the Board.
Is there any discussion? Or questions? And ask for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve item number three as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Yes.
Because I was not in executive session, it may not be appropriate to vote on the item. I don't know how we should handle that if the clerk has direction or the county attorney.
Yep. I think at this point in time would be just appropriate for you to abstain.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I will abstain.
And again, that is based on the, the fact that Supervisor Kavanaugh was not in the executive session for that. Thank you.
Okay, so I believe we had four in favors, or any against, and then the item passes. Now we're back to item number 11, discussion approval, disapproval to, for grant application for Department of Justice, Kent Volkmer.
Thank you, Chair, Members of the Board. Typically, I stand before you when we're talking about the criminal justice system, and I'm bragging about some things that go really well in Pinal County. Unfortunately, it is not all roses and sunshine. One of the issues that we, as a community, have struggled with is young males predominantly, ages really kind of 18 to 23, running in packs and effectively showing up at houses and discharging obscene amounts of ammunition into a house. We have unfortunately seen this on approaching a dozen times. They typically go into communities where the communities are not apt to cooperate with law enforcement. We've had individuals, we suspect, that have been shot in these scenarios that show up at the hospital, and they refuse to speak with law enforcement. They simply say, "I was walking in the desert, and I got struck by a stray bullet." The neighbors typically are not calling our law enforcement community. So what we'll have is we'll have one neighbor that'll say, "Hey, I think I heard a barrage of shots," and we'll have law enforcement that'll have to drive around looking for shell casings, and they'll file, they'll find piles of spent shell casings. We have no ability to prosecute these cases. And without getting into very specific details, one of these very scenarios happened about a month ago in the city of Coolidge. There was a young 14-year-old child who lost her life. She was sleeping in her living room floor. It's becoming an issue in our community, and because we don't have people coming forward, that case we do, but in these other cases where nobody's being injured, we don't have anybody coming forward. So one of the things that collectively our criminal justice system came together, and our law enforcement community right here said, "Look, we've got to do something." There is a program called NIBIN, and it stands for something, but essentially what it does is allows us to take those shell casings, and we can feed them through essentially a machine that'll take a picture, look at the striations, and then they can start determining, "Hey, this is the same gun that's fired every one of these rounds." Because we do get these guns, and then once we collect guns that are from crime scenes, we can discharge them and get a known sample, and we can compare them. The few times we've done it, we found guns that are tied to crimes that were committed in Glendale or Peoria. One of the things that's important to remember, 30% of all crime that occurs in Pinal County is being committed by non-Pinal County residents, 30% of felonies. And a lot of these very serious felonies aren't always locals that are doing it. They're people that are coming in. What this grant does is it allows us to get our own NIBIN machine. Currently, we have to drive to either Phoenix or Tucson. So you're talking an hour and 15 minutes, an hour and a half, one way for an officer to go and feed these shell casings in, one after another, after another, after another, taking potentially days. We've worked with the ATF, and ATF said, "Hey, there's potentially a grant that's out there," and they helped us actually draft some of the language and apply for it, because these NIBIN terminals cost about $400,000, just that machine. And then you have to have the training, because what we can't have is we can't burden our Sheriff's Department and say, "Hey, you're going to have two people that are going to do nothing but feed shell casings in this machine all day, every day." That would be an awfully dry case, because again, they're not even comparing. They're just feeding it in, making sure it works. So what we've done is we've come together with our law enforcement partners and said, "Look, you know, our bigger cities, we want you to designate somebody from your agency that will input those shell casings from your agency, and we'll be able to get some compensation to offset some of that cost, and we'll be able to actually get the NIBIN machine itself, and we'll be able to host it here in Pinal County." We believe, given the information that we have, given the rash of shootings that we have seen, we believe we are very likely to get this, but I need the Board's permission to even apply for this grant. This is not something where we're going preemptively. This is not, and I think somebody had suggested or questioned whether, you know, if you are a lawful handgun owner, if I'm going to make you come in and give us your handgun so we can take shell, test shell casings, that's not at all what this is for. This is nothing preemptive. This is after the fact. This is shell casings that we find on a scene. This is weapons that we have seized as a part of a criminal operation, that we can feed those shell casings back into the NIBIN machine that goes into a national database. that we can feed those shell casings back into the NIBIN machine that goes into a national database. So I'm here today requesting that this board authorize us to apply for these funds. I want to say in sum, I think it's almost $900,000 for, I think, us to be able to have the machine and then operate it for three years.
So this was initially on a consent agenda, and I asked to pull it. Then we decided that we should explain it further, which is why we're here today, instead of just running this through, because I did have a lot of questions on this. And so this still might be confusing to the public. So you got different shell casings from two, three incidents. You're still are not going to necessarily solve that crime because the firearm is still out there. If the firearm does get recovered later, then it ties it all in.
That is correct. So we don't, there's not a master database of every gun that's ever been sold that has a sample shell casing, so we don't have that ability.
They actually tried that several years ago. If anybody that purchased a firearm, there was a spent shell casing in there, and hundreds of, and there was one that was, went to a database, and one was supposed to go to local law enforcement. And they spent hundreds of millions of dollars on this nationwide, and it never solved any crimes the way they tried to do it then. But this particular system does sound like it could actually do some good, as opposed to what they tried to force on everybody before.
That's absolutely fair, Chair. And one of the things that, that I think is frustrating to the law enforcement community is, in theory, this could be a group of five or six individuals that have done every one of these shootings. Or it could be packs of different people doing retaliation back and forth. We don't have any ability right now to tell the difference between that. And then if ultimately one of these weapons are used, so the case I spoke of where unfortunately the young child lost her life, we have those guns. So we're now able to compare and say, hey, if they've been shooting up other houses, is this a one time, you know, is this people saying, oh, this was just retaliation? Or we will be able to go back and potentially track to see, have they done this before? And what we can do is we can use it as a tool. It is not, it's not a be all, end all. It does not give us a guaranteed signed confession, and I would not suggest to anybody it's there, but what it does is allows us to build cases, it allows us to be able to track where some of these criminal organizations are coming, where we're able to see, hey, is this a gun that's, because we know if there's shootings that occur in the West Valley and it's here, it's going to be somebody that has connections in the West Valley and here. So if we're only looking in Casa Grande, or Coolidge, or Santan, or AJ, or Maricopa, if we're focusing all our efforts there, but this gun is also being used in shootings up in the valley, we're probably wasting our time. So what it allows us to do is to get in contact with our other law enforcement brethren to really have genuine conversations about trying to solve these issues that are going on.
Which is my next question. If every law enforcement agency in the valley is not connected to the system, does it work as well?
The more people that are connected, the better it is. The valley has, I believe, a few different NIBIN machines, is my understanding. So they are much, it's much more, much easier, I guess, for them. It's less cumbersome for them to do it, whereas we don't have one local. Again, we have to dedicate basically an entire day's worth of a detective's time or a crime scene tech's time, and we don't have all these extra officers that are sitting around twiddling their thumbs. So this is about bringing this local to our community as we continue to grow.
So if Pinell County Sheriff's Department has this, you have small cities inside of our county, and if something happens inside, say, a Superior, or Kearney, or a smaller department, they don't have, the sheriff doesn't have jurisdiction, it's not under his case, would we then loan this machine out to these small departments to use, to get into?
So we don't loan the machine out, it would be centrally located, and we would enter to, enter into an IGA with all of our local police agencies. So everybody would essentially think of a task force where they donate somebody. So we would have an agreement that the sheriff would be able, in theory, to run that, or maybe Casa Grande could run that for him, Maricopa. The officer that's assigned and available that time could assist a smaller agency, and the idea is the bigger agencies would run their own, but if, if, you know, if the sheriff's office found a ton of them, they may be able to say, hey, Casa Grande, can you come help me out? Hey, Coolidge, can you come help me out? So the idea is it's a collective tool for all of our law enforcement agencies. It's not exclusive to the sheriff. That's why my office is the one that's actually applying for the grant, because it is for the county, it's not for an individual agency.
The whole county does pay taxes, so everybody should be allowed to use it.
Absolutely.
Okay, anyone have any other questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Thank you. So under the IGA, Mr. Volkmer, will there be a charge to other agencies for using this?
I don't believe there's a charge. I believe that they just have to agree to give us bodies when we need them. Not a, not a dollar, there's no fee, there's nothing along those lines.
Okay, and if you went to the local gun ranges and picked up shell casings from people practicing, would you do that to develop a sort of a baseline database of local guns being shot?
No. No, these are suspected in crimes only. Now, obviously, if there was a shooting that occurred at the gun range where somebody was struck with a bullet, we would try and identify those, but no, we're not randomly going to gun ranges or out in the desert and scooping just random shell casings up. That's not really what it's for. Quite frankly, there's too many bullets that are shot every single day in our county and in the state and in our country to really do that. We are, this is limited just to where there is a suspected criminal activity that occurred.
All right, thank you.
That answers all my questions. If you have no more, I will ask for a motion.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve item number 11 as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? And the ayes have it. Moving on to item number 12, public hearing and discussion approval, disapproval of ordinance number 2023 PZ 04022 for a Archicon Architecture, and this will be Ryan Green, and we're going to do 12 and 13 together. Yes.
All right. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Chair, and members of the board. My name is Ryan Green. I will be presenting cases PZ 04022 and PZ PD 04522. This case is collectively known as the Brigado West PAD. It is a commercial development with six pad sites, a daycare, and one charter school. The rezoned case, PZ 04022, is rezoning the site, which is approximately 20 acres, from CB1 local business to C3 general commercial. The overlay is PZ PD 04522, requesting the Brigado West PAD overlay. Its location is south of West Hunt Highway and west of North Thompson Road in Santan Valley, and the applicants are here to answer any questions if need be. Here, looking at the county map, we can see its approximate northern location, not too far from the border with Maricopa County in Santan Valley. Looking at the vicinity map, we can see the various zones. Like I said before, Maricopa County is to the north, not too far, and the surrounding residential areas. And the area map, getting a bit closer, we can see how north of Hunt Highway is a empty zone area with the west of the site is a church, you can't necessarily see it on this one, and east of the site is also a commercial area. Now, taking a look at our comprehensive plan map, the entire area is in the Santan special area plan, with the site itself being community center and the orange area around it being suburban living. Now looking at our zoning, like I said before, the area is on CB1 with adjacent residential zones. Into the west, you can see faintly the GR zone, that's the church to the west. North, we can look at the intersection of Hunt and Thompson. Looking south, we can see the mountain in the background with a road turning. East, onto the adjacent commercial site, part of, south of the gas station there. And finally, west onto the site, with the church being the building there and the adjacent mountain. Proposed is a commercial development. The development has a daycare, a charter school, four pad sites for restaurants, a pad site for retail, a retail user and a car wash, and the site has a fissure that runs across it. Here's their overall site plan. Now, if we look at this, starting in the northwest corner, that is the car wash. Going east is a drafty restaurant. Going east again, drafty restaurant. Going east again, drafty restaurant. Going south, drafty restaurant. Retail to the west of that, the daycare is in the southeast, and going west is the charter school. Here, we can see they have many access points with three on Hunt and three on Thompson to ensure this intersection has decent circulation. Now to that fissure I mentioned before. It runs across the site in purple there, and the applicants have agreed to a stipulation that staff has added that a geotechnical engineer, if they deem it not safe, all construction or development shall be halted until they can deem it safe enough to resume. Comprehensive plan compliance. The development is located along an arterial level road or higher classification. The site limits the retail user to the center of the development. It introduces pedestrian connectivity and provides adequate buffering with landscaping, distance, and retention area. Items for consideration. Adherence to the comprehensive plan. The development will add commercial and educational opportunities to Santan Valley. Residential construction is in process within half a mile of the site. The existence of fissures in the site is currently vacant. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval 7 to 0 with the attached stipulations with zero for the rezones, zero for the rezoning, and 17 stipulations as outlined in the staff report. I know that's fairly quick, but any questions?
Mike?
I think for the public's sake, explain the difference between the CB1 and the C3 that they're going to, if you would, please.
Mr. Chair? Yes, sir. The CB1 that's currently there is the old zoning code and it's local business, and we have updated our standards, and how to put this? Essentially, we'll allow them to be more of a modern commercial site versus going through the site plan and the old zoning code, which they can't even do all their uses they're asking for. And the new zone, C3, will allow them to operate commercially with decent standards for development, and the PAD overlay will allow them to amend it to allow things such as the charter school.
A little bit more flexibility then?
Yes, sir, much more.
Okay.
Mr. Miller?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Do you have a list of the 17 stipulations you can put up?
Uh, no, sir, it's outlined in the report, but I can.
Just for the audiences?
That's fair, yes, sir. And the clerk is on it.
It'll be a staff report. So are we ready for the public hearing, or any questions? Okay.
There they are. Supervisor Miller, did you have any specific things you want me to point out?
I don't think so, but other than, I was a little bit concerned about the fissure. And I mean, construction will be halted, I guess that's with the idea that there'd be some kind of mediation to, to be able to continue construction if they can do, design something, or is it just the project is over?
Oh, no, sir. They'll be able to resume once it's deemed adequate by the geotechnical engineer.
Okay. Okay, I just want clarity on that. Thank you. I didn't know if that was in the stipulation.
Yes, sir, it's number 12.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
To that point, I mean, when it's deemed safe by the, by the engineer, I mean, so what if it's not deemed safe?
Uh, then it's not getting built.
Okay. But I mean, so you started building and then nope, can't do it, you're done, you just kind of leave a wall up and you're done?
Or do you go find an engineer that says it's safe?
Second, second or third opinion, yeah.
That's fair, that's fair. But basically, they'll have to make sure it's safe, but if they can't get the standards right, then they'll just have to keep going for revisions.
Thank you, Brett.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, the geotechnical report and analysis would be done before the construction, before the permitting of, of the building. So what they will build, to your question, Mr. McClure, is per the findings of the geotechn, geotechnical report and any mitigation and or design revisions that have to occur. Thanks go out to the applicant for designing the site plan around the known fissures. If you probably saw that on the site plan. But they're going to have to look at that a little further and see if, if, if those fissures have changed over the years and how that might impact their development, so they can mitigate for it.
Yeah. Thank you.
Because that building envelope could change, I mean, if, after the, the more recent analysis. Anyway, okay, thank you.
Were, was that everything?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so any more discussion among us? Then this is.
Not yet, anyway.
This is a public hearing, would anyone like to?
You want to hear from the applicant?
Do we want to hear from the applicant?
No presentation, okay.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the board. Shane Allman with Tiffany and Bosco, 2525 East Camelback Road in Phoenix. Happy to be here to represent the applicant and the developer on this site. It's been quite a work in progress with, with county staff, and we're grateful for all the work that they've, they've done and working with us. Just to, just to clarify a little bit on the fissures, we do have experts involved that have already analyzed this. In fact, we were just in a meeting with your, your staff yesterday on the, on the plat as we're moving forward with this, and that discussion topic came up. So it's, it's a professional that we've used in this area before, so they're very familiar with the fissures, and we will ensure that all remediation is, is done accordingly and, and with the requirements of the county. So we're, we're excited to, to get moving with this. As, as I said, we've been working closely with staff on, on this to move forward, but we're happy to address any questions that you, you might have today.
I just want in particular, you, you talk about restaurants, is there any particular restaurants that you're looking at bringing? I mean, you know, the public really wants to know, is it a place that you, you pay after you eat? That seems to be.
Maybe we'll open a tab up for you, Supervisor Goodman.
No, I, I'm not worried about me. I, do I look like I go without anyway?
Yeah. The developers had a lot of experience with different types of restaurant users, so they have been in discussions with, with different restaurants that will come to the site. So we'll, we'll continue to work on that as we move forward with the plating and, and other entitlement processes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So you're not the geologist. If they were here, I would have some questions for them. Just general, how deep do they go, what causes them? I remember seeing them down along Ironwood where the D.R. Horton project's going in, and I've always wondered, how, how are they going to mitigate that? So.
Yeah, and I'm not a geologist, Chairman, but I know that, you know, the discussions that we discuss, maybe we have a professional here that can address some of that, but yeah, it will be remediated.
Hi there, Jeff Cost, Glenwood Development, Mesa, Arizona. Definitely not an expert, have become, a lot more familiar. I'm the owner of the, the project. On average, they can be between 15 to 25 feet deep. There will be full remediation of that, where we're having to cut down on angles to take care of the fissures, and then we end up placing fabric at the base of that fissure, and then compact, and then place fabric again. Fissures don't like water, and so we're also going to have to block the water. It's a, the grade flows from the south to the north, and so we're going to have to block water from getting to those fissures. So we've, as you saw on that site plan, we're really protecting that area in regards to improvements, but also in regards to leaving buildings, structures away from that. Only we're allowing to close the fissure areas would be roadway, you know, the drive or utilities. Our consultants in regards to this are heavily involved in fissures. They helped with the remediation across the street to the north with the subdivision that went in on the other side of, of Hunt Highway. We're also using the same contractor who was involved in a lot of remediation in the area. And so a lot of careful detail has been, has been taken place here, and we understand definite concerns. Everybody understands it's me and my wife, because we're the ones signing on the loan to this whole development. And so she looked at me and said, can you spell fissures? No, so the reality is we, we've been, been very careful with this. So the reality is, we've been very careful with this. I've done one hundred and seventy-five projects over the years, and we're excited to bring a commercial development to the county, to the residents.
Okay. Yeah, that answers some. I've just, was what you said about the water, I was always wondering, did the fact that we were taking the groundwater, is that what causes them, or does it cure them by filling them? And I know we don't have the sinkholes like, say, Florida has, where you just drive along and then everything sinks. We've not seen that, and hopefully we don't ever see that, so...
Right. They're kind of unexplained events. Fissure expert would have to explain it, but we're following his guidelines. For example, I think it may be fifty feet or twenty-five feet is what our buildings can be. They can't be any closer to that, to any proximity of an existing fissure.
It looks like we might get an engineer's explanation coming up behind you.
Here he is.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the board. Yeah, so to answer your question, first of all, I'm not a fissure expert or geologist either, but I have worked on a number of projects having to do with fissures. And in fact, Hunt Highway, right in the vicinity of this project, crosses a fissure. And so when we did that project a number of years ago, we employed a mitigation strategy similar to what Jeff here described, to protect the roadway from the fissure activity, and it's held up fine since then. And it is caused by groundwater withdrawal that occurs over time due to well usage and farming practices in the area, and it's something that can be mitigated but is often best avoided with setbacks, which is, if you saw their site plan, their proposed buildings are setback away from these fissures. So I have read their geotech report that they've prepared for this site so far, and we feel pretty comfortable with the design so far, so... Is there any other questions?
It doesn't look like it.
Thank you.
Where I'm from in Appalachia, they pronounce it "fesher," "fesger." Rolls off your tongue so easy. Okay, now it's a public hearing. Would anyone like to speak on this? Hearing and seeing that, I'll close the public hearing, and I just want to make a comment. You know, I'm getting tired of seeing all the housing and more homes and apartments and rentals. What's everybody always ask for? They always ask for these amenities to make the quality of life better. So it's good to see that finally some shopping and some fun things are going in there to make the people that are already there, their life better. So anyone else? If none, I'll ask for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I echo all the comments that you just made. So with that, I'm going to recommend that we approve item number twelve as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? And the ayes have it. Is there a motion on number thirteen?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve item number thirteen as follows with the seventeen stipulations that have been presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? And the ayes have that. Now we have fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen, which will go together, and that's a discussion approval, public hearing on 2023 PZPA 01322. And Evan is going to present on this.
Board of Supervisors, Mr. Chairman, good morning. My name is Evan Evangelopoulos, and today I will be presenting a case in Santan Valley, multi-family project. It is three cases together, PZPA 01322, PZ4122, and PZPAD 4122. One of them is a comprehensive plan amendment. So the first one is requesting a non-major comprehensive plan amendment for Santan Valley to designate twenty-four acres from suburban neighborhood to urban transitional. The second one is a rezoning of the same area to rezone from suburban ranch to multiple residence MR to allow a two-hundred-and-twenty-five-unit multi-family project. The third one is the PAD of the same project. It's requesting an overly district to allow, again, the two-hundred-and-twenty-five-unit multi-family project on the same area. It's located at the northwest corner of Ockatyon and Kenworthy in Santan Valley. The applicant is Michael Gainesell, and the agent is Brandon Ray. This is the approximate location of the project within Pinal County. Very close to Queen Creek. And this is the project, the twenty-four acres. This is a close-up of the area and the three cases. So this is the Santan Valley area plan. The existing use is suburban neighborhood. The proposed is urban transitional. It allows for a little bit more density, actually quite a lot, although the applicant goes just a little bit more of the eight development units per acre. So there's the current zoning, a suburban ranch, and the proposed is multiple residence. We have suburban homestead to the east and general rural to the south, and CR3 to the north and west, and a commercial category. So this is the proposed project. It's two-hundred-and-twenty-five units. The density is nine-point-fourty-seven developing units per acre. It consists of one-bedroom, two-bedroom, and three-bedroom units, about five hundred parking spaces. And I will show you also the proposed architecture. These are the proposed standards for the project compared to what the code provides. And I will add that the side and rear setback reductions apply to the whole property and not to individual buildings. So they don't really affect the project at all.
Mr. Chair, just a quick question. Mr. Evangelopoulos, there you go. Parking, I noticed it was two-hundred-and-twenty, two-hundred-and-twenty-five units, four-hundred-and-ninety-six parking spaces, so you're just barely over two parking spaces per unit. Is there a, is there a minimum? It seems to me like in our commercial ventures we do around here that it's every so many hundred square feet is a parking space. Is that the same in this particular case?
It's the same for residential, single-family, and I apologize, I think for multi-family, it can go up to, can go to one-point-five. But there you go. It's, it's on the, it's on the table. So for one-bedroom units is one-point-five, for two-bedroom units is two and two. So all required parking is according to code.
Okay.
Evan, we don't see these until they come before us. How long has something like this been planned? When did, how long does it take before they initiated this until it reaches us now?
When you say initiated, you mean from the moment we received the application?
Yeah.
I don't have the date, but it usually takes about six months, at maximum, six months. It's about three to four months to go to the Planning and Zoning Commission, including the reviews that precede that, and then a month and a half to two months to go to the Board of Supervisors. That's approximate. That's the maximum. This is what I usually tell applicants.
But obviously, they've been working on this longer to come up with these designs and all of these.
Yes. Apparently, yes.
Okay. All right, I might come back to why I brought that up later, so...
Sure. And also, a rezoning application requires a neighborhood meeting, so the applicant is required to submit a neighborhood report of the outcome of the meeting. So that adds more time to the applicant before they even submit the application.
Okay.
So these are the types of buildings that the applicant is proposing, and they have a presentation after me also in more detail.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, can you go back to that next, the previous slide?
Yes.
Or the, you know, or the parking? Go to that parking one again.
Oh, the parking. There you go.
So total provided, four-ninety-six. That was not the number, it's four, four-forty-eight.
It's required.
So there's, it was required, but providing, okay, I got it.
Yes.
Okay. So they're providing like an extra fifty, almost.
Yeah. And that's because the code requires one-point-five units for certain units instead of two.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'm north.
Yeah. Okay.
I guess the question, going back to, the current zoning is, what did you say, up to eight units per acre?
Oh, the density, yes, up to eight development units per acre.
That's the current zoning.
That's the current comprehensive plan designation. It's suburban neighborhood. For single-family, it's one to four developing units per acre, and for single-family attached, it's four to eight developing units per acre, which is this case here.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Real quick.
Yes.
Do you know the density of that neighborhood just above it?
I don't. It's definitely less, it, let's go back to the Santan plan. It's suburban neighborhood, it's single-family, so it should not be, it will not be more than four developing units per acre.
Okay. Look more down than that, but whatever. I guess that depends on how much open space they have.
Okay. This is looking north, and there were some friends around grazing. This is, yeah, so that's the subdivision to the north with CR3.
Okay.
And this is looking south. Looking east, SH, the zoning, that's suburban homestead. And looking west, with the antennas. So items for board consideration. The land use request is for a minor Santan Valley amendment, a rezoning, and a plan area development. The proposed density is nine-point-fourty-six developing units per acre, while the present Santan Valley plan permits eight developing units per acre, hence the amendment, proposed amendment. The property has legal access. The multi-family project proposes a housing type different from the single-family type predominant in the area. And granting of the rezoning will require, after the time of zoning approval, that the applicant owner submit and secure from the applicable and appropriate federal, state, county, and local regulatory agencies, all required applications, plans, permits, supporting documentation approvals, which means they have to go through a site plan review, which lasts about three months, more or less, and then apply for the building permits, grading permits, air quality permits, and any other necessary permits. And before I go to the neighbors' concerns, I have to say, about the Planning and Zoning Commission vote, they voted, it was a draw for the comprehensive plan amendment, and it was voted four to two against approval for the rezoning and four to two against approval for the PAD. So I will go on to the neighbors' concerns. We have received twelve letters of opposition regarding traffic, and that's about traffic increases, increases potential traffic congestion, congestion at the intersection, and increasing accidents. And there is a traffic engineering division here to discuss more about traffic, if you have any questions. The proposed housing type, that was another type of concern. There are fears that it might devolve into Section Eight subsidized housing over time. Rental housing does not match the single-family properties around, two-story units near one-story single-family homes. Then concerns about the existing neighborhood lifestyle, increased noise, increased crime, pollution, those are just possible concerns. Increased number of people, renters don't take pride in their apartments, thus are different from owners. Far-from-city lifestyle will be ruined, rural character will be ruined, and not a place for kids anymore. These are comments extracted directly from the responses we received. And then finally, financial concerns, that the adjacent single-family property values would depreciate over time due to the presence of deteriorating apartments. However, staff recommendation is approval with zero stipulations for the amendment, one stipulation for the rezoning, and seventeen stipulations for the PAD. Most of the grounds that the county needs a diversity of housing, and it seems that the applicant has submitted a good project, and that was the comment by the Planning and Zoning Commission as well. Now, I have to add something on the stipulations. The resolution and the two ordinances were submitted, correct and updated to the clerk and on Nova separately. However, the packet that you have received has the, although the resolution and the ordinances in there are correct, they contain the non-updated version.
That's it?
That's it, yes.
I have a question regarding planning and zoning.
Yes.
Split three to three, that's only six members.
Four to two.
It's still six members.
Okay.
There's supposed to be ten. Natasha, what is the status? Why are there only six members? On a case like this, we need as much guidance as we can, and of course, we can't really question the reasoning of the PNZ, but when will we get up to the full ten? but when will we get up to the full 10? I don't. I don't, or are they just not showing? If so, do we need to talk to our individual members and let them know? I'm just asking some, on that whole process, because it all ties into this, so.
We have made some current appointments as it relates to the Planning and Zoning Board. Now, as far as attendance, that would need to come from Planning and Zoning staff if members are in attendance or not. But currently, right now, I believe they only have the six members. Is that, how many current members do you have, Brent?
We currently have nine.
Nine.
But two recent appointments have occurred, and then a third one. So we will have a full member, a 10-member board. However, for the first time in like 20 years, we had a Planning and Zoning Commission meeting where we did not have a quorum, and we had to dismiss the meeting. And similarly, two meetings ago, we had to delay the start of the meeting considerably to try and get members to join on the phone because we didn't have a quorum. Part of the reason for that is that we had multiple open positions, but only recently have we had issues with quorum at Planning and Zoning Commission.
I know that my, one of my appointees just take, so this might have happened before he was seated. So just, that helps us to know what we have to do to make sure that you have all the tools that you need.
Mr. Chair, I have a question.
Yes.
So on item 14, it's a 3-3 split. On 15 and 16, it's a 4-2 to disapprove. Why then, if it's a disapproval by PNZ, why is the staff recommending approval?
Because the county is in need of a diversity of housing, and it was a good project. And that was the comment by the PNZ, actually. Yes.
The way, Mr. Chairman, Mr. McClure, the way that we handle it from a staff perspective is we don't base our recommendation based on what the Planning and Zoning Commission provides. As a legislative body, they provide you a recommendation. We provide a recommendation from our perspective. The way that we look at it is, have they satisfied the requirements? Is what they're proposing to do within the confines of our rules to change it? And in this project case, and many cases that came before it, they have followed the process to the letter. They've provided the advertisements. They've provided the submittals. They've responded to comments. They've gained acceptance from engineering and public works in terms of meeting the requirements. So we typically recommend approval if all requirements in the process has been satisfied, if that makes sense.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, are we going to hear from the applicant now?
Good evening, Chair. Members of the Commission, Brennan Ray, 1850 North Central, here on behalf of the applicant and the developer. It's certainly a pleasure to stand before you, and I'm here representing Snowden Partners. They are the proposed developer of this, what we would consider a high-quality development here at the northwest corner of Ocatillo and Kenworthy roads. We believe that the plan that presents, is presented to you today reflects the input that we've received as we've gone throughout this lengthy process, contrary to what staff indicated as to what a typical rezoning process is. I can tell you that we first filed the pre-app, which is before the actual application process. There is a pre-app process. We filed that August 17th of '21. So we've been in this process well over a year and a half, a year and seven months, if I'm to be a little more precise. And throughout that time, we've worked closely with staff. We have, as I'll get in later on in my presentation, worked with the neighbors to try to address some of their concerns. We are sensitive to the existing neighbors in the area and believe our plan reflects that sensitivity to it, and I will get into more in that. We believe that there is support in the comprehensive plan and the key concepts for this type of a development, and we would agree with staff's analysis that additional diversity of housing is always needed. And we know that there's been a number of discussions at the board level, as well as among the community members, of the need for commercial development in and throughout the area. And we are mindful of that, and I would offer that a good economic policy starts with a good housing policy. And part of a good housing policy is a diversity of housing choices and opportunities. We are okay with all the conditions of approval that have been presented to you. There's an additional one that I will speak to a little bit later, but we would request your approval. Again, this is, this is the site, as was indicated in staff's report. It's planned for residential. We're here to talk about, I guess, the type of residential that it is. As we go on, this is the site plan, and here's where we're trying to get to. Again, we believe it's a high-quality development, and we believe that it's a design. And I'll get into the details of it and specifically highlight kind of the things that we are. Before I go too far, I can go into much more details about the type of community that this is and the residents that will be there. The bottom line, the takeaway from all this is that the people that live in this, what I'll call a single-family rental development, are people that are doing so because of the lifestyle choice. They choose to live in this. They want to have a maintenance-free lifestyle. They don't want to live in an apartment complex, and so they choose to this. And I can go into more details, as you would like, in terms of the demographics relative to it. So this is kind of an outline of where we are, and I want to talk about the neighborhood outreach that we've engaged in. As I mentioned, we filed the pre-app in August of '21. Shortly after that, we started with some door-to-door stuff and then had an initial neighborhood meeting back in November. There were 54 people that attended. That was a virtual meeting. And then we filed that application on July 22nd of '22. And so here we are, I think I said a year, we're well over a year throughout this process, and I'll explain why. We did have a second neighborhood meeting in December of '22. That was in-person. Some of the folks that are here tonight were, attended that neighborhood meeting as well. And then additionally, we had the Planning Commission meeting. And even subsequent to that, I've had the opportunity to meet with some neighbors, to talk to them, to see if there's ways we can continue to address some of the concerns that they have. So at every step along the way, we've tried to listen to neighbors and to come up with things that will do it. What's on the screen before you now is a comparison of where we started at our first neighborhood meeting to where we are today. And as you look at that, there's a number of things that I'll kind of run through, but the plan on your left, that plan called for 262 residences, which was a density of 11.22 to the acre. Now, we're here to present 225 units. So throughout this process and listening to neighbors and feedback, we've lost 44 different units and reduced the density to what it is today. You can see that one of the things that we've done is increased the landscape setback along Kenworthy and Ocatillo roads to where I've got an approximate 75-foot landscape setback along Kenworthy. And along Ocatillo, it varies between 55 and 60 feet, whereas before, we did not have that. And part of that was the sensitivity of our existing neighbors on the east and on the south. As we got further into the development process, we understand that flooding is a major concern, and so we needed to accommodate some drainage channels and some other improvements to the site. The other changes that we made, you'll see that there's some, what I'll call baby blue, buildings on there. Those are two-story units, whereas before, we had them scattered around the periphery and some internally. With this updated plan, we've pulled a lot of them internal to the development to where there's a number of primarily one-story buildings that front onto Ocatillo and to Kenworthy. The other thing that we've done is to be sensitive to our existing neighbors on our east-north and on our west. And very purposefully, we've got a landscape setback. We've got drive aisles, but importantly, we've pulled buildings interior to the site where we do not have homes backing up to any of the existing residences. Again, trying to buffer them and provide them separation. And we have a considerable amount of difference, considerable amount of distance as we look at that, and I can go into more details. One of the other thing that we've done importantly, as we kind of get to it, and I'll just kind of skip along. I can go into the architecture. I know staff presented that to you as well. But one of the thing I wanted to focus on, because as we've heard from the neighbors and we've heard through visiting with others, that traffic is a major concern. We know the county has plans for the Penal Parkway and then the further north-south road. But as we looked at this site and as we visited closely with staff, they asked us to do a number of things. And I've outlined that on this particular slide, where we are improving the western half of Kenworthy adjacent to our site. We are putting in two deceleration lanes into our site, one at the intersection and another one a little further to the north. The purpose, as you may know, of deceleration lanes is to get traffic out of the, through, to be able to slow and make that turn. Additionally, we're providing our half-street improvements along Ocatillo. And you can see there's a little notch outline at our southwest site. That is an SRP substation. And part of the reason that we've been in this process so long is trying to coordinate with SRP, with county engineering, those off-site plans, pole relocations, and then dealing with SRP and their rights as a property owner there.
Before you get too far along, so there are two ways in, two ways out. When I looked at that side-by-side, it looked like you cut one of the ways out. If you go back a couple slides right there, you have a tree. Okay, I see those trees are down like a median knot on, it looked like it was blocked off.
Yeah, so Chairman, there was this existing entrance.
So you've prettyed up the entrance, but I was looking at, how are you going to drive through those trees? But I see a road on each side. I see it, thank you.
Yep. And again, I'm happy to go into the details, but there has been extensive discussion. There are a number of existing power poles along Ocatillo and Kenworthy Road that will need to be relocated. And that will be borne at our expense to relocate those out of the future right-of-way and to bring them on to our property. The other thing that we do, and we know that, again, traffic is bad, we are contributing our proportionate share to a traffic signal at Ocatillo and Kenworthy. So that's kind of where we're trying to get to. And I can go into more details as this group would like, but we've worked closely with staff. We've tried to be respectful of the neighbors as we've gone throughout the process. One of the main comments at the Planning Commission, and everybody was very complimentary of the design of the layout, they didn't have too much to speak of it. The main comment, I guess, and the concern coming from the Planning Commission was the impact on some of the existing property rights of the people to the east and to the south. And so I've handed to the clerk, and I don't know if the clerk has passed out. There's an additional stipulation that we would like to add to it. And the reason that we want to add this additional stipulation is just to provide an additional level of notice to our future residents of what exists in the area. And this is a stipulation that we've worked with county legal and the planning department to do it, and I'm happy to read it into the record. But the essence of what it says is that we have to display in a very conspicuous area, meaning visible to all, a map in our leasing office, so that when residents do come in, they see this map. And on that map, it shows this site in context of the surrounding area with big, bold letters that say, if you didn't already know dum-dums, there's existing properties that are adjacent to us that have horses and cows and other animal privileges, and that those uses generate noise and dust and odor and all kinds of things. And so in this fashion, we're able to put anyone that walks into the leasing office on notice of this. And so we would request that this stipulation be added to it, to the approval, should the board feel so inclined. But again, we've worked hard with a number of people to come up with a plan that we believe makes sense, that addresses the needs of additional housing in the area, and would request your approval. Chair, if I may, I'm happy to answer any questions that you or others on the board might have. But to the extent that there are neighbors here, and it's appropriate, I would like the opportunity to come back up for rebuttal.
I have some questions, but I'll let my colleagues go first.
I think I'd rather wait till after I hear from the neighbors.
I have one of, has the rent already been set on units like this? Because a lot of people have sticker shock of just how much these things cost to actually get into one of those.
Yeah, Chair, members of the board, we don't have final numbers set. Obviously, I can tell you what our best guess is as to what they will be. But as we go through the construction process and do all that, then those numbers get firmed up a little bit more.
Okay, I'll wait till after the public speaks as well for my other comments. All right, this is a public hearing, and I have a lot of folks that want to talk on this. And so we do have the three minutes, and you'll watch the lights there. Yellow gives you a warning, and then red, and we'll ask you to tie it up. So first, I have Jared McGowan.
Good morning, or afternoon, almost, Mr. Chairman and Board. My name is Jared McGowan. I am at 4779 North Kenworthy Road. This is on the corner of Ocatillo and Kenworthy, directly across the street from the money, sorry, apartments that they want to build. We're the only house on the corner. The other two are dirt lots, and that is where Kousler is right now, as you know. That being said, one would think if the builder wanted to talk to a neighbor, as he mentioned about 20 times, being impacted by these high-density apartments they would build, surely they would talk to me. But have they? No. They mentioned up there that their door-to-door stuff started in November, but I'm literally on the corner. I don't know where they've been. I guess we can continue to sugarcoat this and tell them exactly what, and have them say exactly what they think you guys want to hear. But the realistic thing is, they haven't talked to most of the neighbors. They talked to a couple, but the ones that are directly affected, the one on the corner, they haven't even talked to me about it. Now, this wasn't, the original meeting they had was in November of, I think, 29th, 2021. This wasn't like any other neighborhood meeting I've been to before. This wasn't a meeting. This was them telling us what they're doing and then, I guess, answering some random questions that they picked. This wasn't any kind of forum. I don't even know how you could call it a public meeting, and I've been to a bunch of these. There was one on Combs and Ocatillo, the one in Ocatillo and Ironwood. And there's always public comment, but not in their first initial meeting when they told us about this. They said in that initial meeting that they would follow up with the neighbors. They said that we couldn't answer all the questions right now. There was 54 people attended, but really, there was probably more because it was all virtual. And they would follow up with us when they had us and then go from there. They haven't followed up with us. They haven't done anything that they promised. The intersection of Ocatillo and Kenworthy is a four-way stop. Even with the road improvements, it'll be two and two lanes each way. You can't get out of there with two and two lanes. That's it. That's all it is, and a stop sign and maybe a stoplight. 500 apartments or 500 parking spaces will just continue to erode the traffic that's already there. If you look at their original site plan, like you said, and then look at the new one, they reduced those units not because neighbors, because of the utilities and the wellsite that wasn't on the original plan. They act like neighbors have done this, but realistically, it's them doing this because they had to. So neighbors, and you'll hear from more of my neighbors, realistically, they have talked to a couple, but they haven't talked to most. And you would think that the person, the only person who owns that property on the corner they would talk to that's developed, but they've never talked to me. I hope that you guys will not approve this and follow the Planning Committee's recommendations. Thank you.
Patrick Erickson.
Patrick Erickson, I live across the street from this development at 40797 North Kenworthy. Bought the property in 2003 as an adult. I grew up about a mile north of there on Murphy Road. Family moved out there in '69. So for me to talk about urbanization and changing from rural and everything else, if you go a quarter-mile from that corner that he just mentioned, quarter-mile circle around there, you have six different zonings in there. It's commercial, suburban ranches, suburban homestead, the Wayne's Ranch one, and as well as several other ones. If you try to do population density within a mile of that corner, you end up with just a little over 1,100 people per square mile. a little over 1,100 people per square mile. In '69, we had five houses within five miles of us, 25-mile radius. Halloween was really easy for us because we were only going to hit three or four houses, and Halloween was over with. I'm speaking for this project. I'm not speaking against it. When my family moved out there, we wanted more amenities. People that have been moving out there for the last 30, 40 years want more amenities. We have a hospital right down the road, three miles. We had police stations within a mile of us. We have a urgent care within a mile of us. We have 12 stoplights going down Ocatillo Road to get into Queen Creek where we used to have two stop signs. We have paved roads. When my brother was, crashed his motorcycle, cowboy on a horse, tackled him in the field, put him out because he was on fire. We then had to load him into a car and take him down dirt roads into Chandler, the nearest hospital, 30 miles away. It's not a rural community anymore. It is an urban one. Again, 1,100 people per square mile. And if you go out two miles, that goes up to 2,200 people per square mile. Town on Queen Creek is about 3,300 people per square mile. City of Mesa is a little bit more than that, about 5,000. So it's a neat little area, but it is not rural. And it has been changing. Again, I bought my property in 2003, and everybody that's going to speak after me against it have been there for like three or four, some maybe six years. I don't think anybody is going to speak from 20 or 40 years' experience. But I applaud the Planning and Zoning Commission. I applaud the Board of Supervisors. I applaud the sheriff. You've made this area something that people want to move into. You guys are doing a great job, and the biggest thing to me is, again, Brendan didn't talk about it, but they're going to spend four, a little over $4 million to road improvements and stuff like that. Ocatillo needs improvement. That intersection needs improvement. We need, I guess, I'm through. Thank you.
LeAnn Weiss.
Hi, my name's LeAnn Weiss. So I don't live in this immediate area. I live a few miles away at 33117 North Brinley Lane. I've been there for 13 years. My husband and I own a business in Chandler, and that matters because it used to take us, hmm, maybe 15, 20 minutes to get to the freeway. Takes us over an hour now during traffic hour. I can't get from my house to the other side of town to doctor's appointments, chiropractor appointments, things like that, without it taking an hour to get into Queen Creek. It's maybe 10 miles. I work in the housing industry, so I, I can respect diversity of housing, but this is a suburban area. It may not be rural. It used to be, but it's definitely not urban. There is no transportation. There's no buses. There's really no Uber, no nothing like that. So working in the housing industry, something of this nature, sometimes people don't own cars.
Could you get closer to the mic?
Oh, yeah. Sometimes people don't own cars, so you know, that's, that's a big deal. You, you know, it's a mile down the road to walk to the nearest CVS store. It's, it's not a urban area. There's no sidewalks. It's very dark at night. You can't see the kids or people walking up and down the roads. Lots of times, there's people walking up and down the roads, you can't see them. We've all almost hit people out there because you just cannot see anything. The congestion for the schools, getting into the schools on Combs Road on Ocatillo during the school time, you can't get across town. I mean, the traffic out there is just completely awful. And with the 496 parking spots, that's going to add, you know, potentially that many more cars to a system, road system that is already exceeded. I just don't see how that is going to help anyone. Also, it's an, it's an agricultural area, so you know, you have cows, you have horses. My husband and I, we race. We have a semi. Like, you have big vehicles coming in and out of there. Our neighbors sometimes complain about that. So it, it, we moved out there because we didn't want to live in the city. Like I said, I worked in downtown Tempe. We own a business in Chandler. I live all the way out there and drive into town because I don't want to live in that type of an environment. And I've been here for a long time, longer than this project has been, and I just, I don't really want that in my neighborhood. I don't want more traffic. I just want it to kind of stay the way that it is. Now, west of Ironwood, perfectly fine. There's all kinds of diversity of housing going in there. It's a more urban area, but this side of Ironwood really isn't. So that's all. Thank you.
Andy Shu.
My name is Andy Soul, and I live directly south of this project, about 150 yards. I live on just over four acres. We have horses and single-family residents there. This, this project is, just blew me out of the water when it first came out, right? I saw, you know, cows across the street there, awesome, right? I mean, that's, that's kind of what this little pockets got, got going on. One of the things that really just really upset me is we're not making, we're not making any more ranch-style property, right? We're taking it away. We're not adding to ranch-style property where people can have horses and, and, and raise some chickens for food and, and that type of thing, right? I mean, they, we just, we're, we're, we're going away from that, and I think that's the wrong direction. We live out almost on the edge of, the edge of Ocatillo there. I mean, we're less than a mile, we're in the desert. We're at the canal, right? So there really isn't anything else out there. And this proposed project is allowing 200 and whatever apartments, right? And at the same time, they have no green space. If you look around, if you blow that map up, you'll see every subdivision has parks, areas for their kids, that type of thing. They, they don't, they're not offering that. The cost, I mean, this is not low-income housing. It was stated by counsel, told me straight up, right? This is not low-end housing. You see it by the prices. He's, he's kind of working off of the price with you guys and telling you, hey, you know, we're going to work with the numbers, but we all know what it really is going to be. At the end of the day, it's going to be expensive, and this is a for-profit project at the expense of the county people and what it means out there in these little pockets. We have them all over, right? We have them all the way to Chandler. They're still there. And as we whittle them away, you know, I mean, that, you're, you guys have done a great job at, at, you know, stopping a lot of the nonsense that goes on out here. Again, LeAnn spoke. We're out here for a reason. Moved out here for a reason, to get away from the hustle and bustle. We really need a town, right? And I don't want town right there. If, if, if it happens, so be it, but at the same time, I, I thought I moved far enough out to be away from the town. They want to pay for their portion of the stoplight, right? Well, that's a quarter of it. That's not their portion when they have 500 cars, right? I have a, a single-family residence with two cars. The staff said that they, your staff here basically said that they approved the fact that they got all the paperwork in line. I, I can totally agree with that, but that's not approving anything. The planning commissioners that we met at before, they're, they had genuine concerns for this project and where it's located. And I think that's your guys' job at the end of the day to decide, you know, is this really, is this really necessary here in this location? And I'm, I'm extremely opposed to it, and I appreciate your time, guys. Thank you so much for your service.
Jarrett Roser.
My name is Jarrett Roser. I'm here with my wife and child. We live at 1695 East Magnum. We are residents of Wayne Ranch, and we back up to this property to the north. Wayne residents like myself who share common borders with this property are against the proposed zoning changes. I'd like to note that Wayne Ranch is the only property that shares common borders with this parcel. We are very concerned about the proposed zoning change as this is essentially an extension of our neighborhood. With that, we believe the density of the proposed development does not coincide with the surrounding single-family homes and also the suburban ranch zoning, suburban homestead zoning in the area. For my family, the reason for purchasing, purchasing our home in Wayne Ranch was because this property is and was zoned single-family. We thought we would be safe. To expect single-family homes behind us, we did not anticipate the possibility of multifamily rentals. There's been talking points of a need for this product, this type of product. I'd like to point out that a development half a mile away where the Lynx Golf Course was will include single-family residential, garden-style multifamily, high-density apartments, and a build-to-rent single-family product for a total of 106 acres. Another development a mile west is the Amberland Queen Creek. It's a massive, three-story-tall, 199-unit, 55-plus-community complex. That's an 8.5-acre development. And these are just two of many developments west and south of us that are currently in development that I feel fit this need for the style of living. Now, I understand that growth in the East Valley is here and more is coming. I feel there does need to be some thoughtful consideration as to what and where this growth happens, though, as to not strip away the existing rural community culture. So with that, please protect this area and the surrounding SR and SH zones as I feel this case will become leverage or defense for their futures. Thank you.
Joshua Hill.
Before my time starts, can you guys put the map of the aerial? Is that allowed? Sorry. I don't know how to do it. Thank you, buddy. Appreciate it. Chairman, Vice Chairman, gentlemen of the board, my name is Joshua Hill. I reside at 40859 North Kenworthy. I am directly east of this property. My wife, mother-in-law, and our kids moved to Santan to live more rural and know that the CC and ours and the surrounding properties in our community would not be divided less than 3.3 acres. We bought our place knowing and appreciating that. The planned development that's being discussed today would be right out our front door across Kenworthy. We are not naive and know at some point that acreage may be turned into something, but not a development like this one. We can dress it up and call it rental units and a lifestyle choice, but the simple reality is they are for rent. One cannot own them, and over time, that leads to deterioration and lack of pride of ownership, resulting in likely subsidizing housing or, at the very least, a rundown property and increasing crime rates. The roads are already congested and dangerous in the intersection of Ocatillo and Kenworthy. Now we are looking to add 226 more units and vehicles. One of the gentlemen from the zoning and planning committee stated there may be a need for this. As people retire from their farms, they want to still live nearby in their community, but don't want to take care of big property. This argument is nullified by the fact that you have part, you have 106 acres at the Lynx Golf Club, which is at Ocatillo and, uh, Ironwood, just west a mile, as well as a 60-acre at Apache Sun Golf Course, which is north, which will be rental homes as well. The 60, of course, being turned housing. Also, less than a mile away as well, Amberland is the brand-new 55-plus community that's being built at Ironwood and Ocatillo that has 199 rental units. There is multiple subdivisions around the area that would allow these said individuals to be able to retire, whether it be renting or purchasing. This development is trying to rezone one of the most dense zoning right by several square miles of suburban ranch housing. While there's just a transaction to business involved, this is our livelihood and where we raise our children. This is not wanted by the vast majority in the community, but unfortunately, not to everyone could take care, take off work to be here, and we were given seven days' notice to get letters mailed in for this hearing. I just ask that you please consider that this will do to our, what this will do to our community and how this will set a precedent for anyone wanting to change zoning in this area. It will likely have a domino effect and ruin the lifestyle we all moved out here for. Thank you very much.
Jessica Campbell.
Hi, thank you for your time today. I actually grew up in an urban area.
Could we get your address?
Sure, of course. 39907 North Minetti Street. I live behind where this property will be in the Cambria community. And as I was saying, I grew up in an urban area, and we had our cars broken into. I listened to sirens every night. That's how I would fall asleep. My grandmother was mugged right in front of our house, which led to her breaking her hip and passing away. I moved from an urban area out to Santan Valley for a better quality of life. Now I get to hear donkeys in the morning instead of sirens, although that is slowly changing and slowly becoming a little bit more aggressive with the sirens now. And I have to tell you, this is really disappointing. There's a lot of places where a community like this would belong, but it's not in our community. And what bothers me more so than just the fact that it's going to go up is it is targeting prospective renters who are basically going to be coming in from Maricopa. And the way that I see this is that we're becoming an extension of Maricopa. And by default, our political landscape is also going to become an extension of Maricopa and generally Southern California. And that is not why I live in Santan Valley, Arizona, and I thank you so much for your time.
Travis Barnby.
My name is Travis Barnby. I'm at 1714 East Quarter Horse Trail. I am just south, so my, back of my house will view this apartment multifamily residence area. Me and my wife moved out here approximately four or five years ago. We have two young kiddos. Just love the aspect of this area. I grew up in Mesa, very congested, and I love the peace and quiet out here and the ability to, like, we have chickens, get the horses. And I'm young, I'm 33. My fellow friends, they want our lifestyle. Everyone I talk to my age wants our lifestyle, so why are we taking that away from our generation? Why aren't we, you know, providing that for them, the opportunity to have that? So I don't think, I oppose this, and hopefully, this will not be approved. Thank you.
Kimberly Barnby.
Hi, my name is Kimberly Barnby. I live at 1714 East Quarter Horse Trail. I live directly south of where this is being built. So I don't believe this location is a good fit for the community. As a member, by adding 225 units to this location will not only increase our number of people, but the cars on the road as well. I personally bought my, bought my house because I love the views my backyard holds. Now if this passes, I will have to look at these apartments. It's a disgrace. This property should not be rezoned for multi-residents. I cannot understand how a wonderful piece of land can have the zoning changed only for profit. Thank you so much.
That's all the cards I have, but if anyone else would like to speak on this, now would be the time. Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the board for any comments or questions.
Just a, just a few questions if I could, if I have staff. Maybe back to the applicant himself, but do we want to hear from the applicant again in rebuttal or just wait?
If there's questions for him, but so far, there's no questions for him.
Okay, all right. So with staff, a question I have is, there's been a lot of, of comments that were made about that, the redo or the re-zoning of those, what had been looked at and, and talked about apartments where the golf course used to be. Is that something you can address and talk to a little bit today and talk about? They mentioned 106 acres of apartments. Can you give a little bit more clarity to that at this point?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I, I kind of get a smile on my face because this, this is going to be an interesting answer. So I have to really think about it here. So the project that was discussed with respect to the Lynx, when folks got up and talked about it, it was said in such a way that, that that is a done deal. That project is actually well behind this project, but I'm sure the, the developer for that project would be glad to think that, you know, it's, it's a done deal and, and there's going to be a bunch of multifamily at, at the Lynx. But that's, that's undecided. That's, that's a way out. That's something that has been applied for, but it, there've been, once again, similar to this case, it's, it's, it's a long case with a lot of controversy, and it's, it's a long ways to go before they're back or making it to the point where, where they're, they're with this board. The only portion of the Lynx that has been approved is, is single-family development, not multifamily in that area. And as you probably know, Supervisor, that's zoned commercial, so that's... So that's, that's, that's a conversation for another day.
Okay. And so how, how many units are going in on the very back corner of that particular, of the Lynx? Do you know right off the top of your head?
I don't, but, but Mr. Ray may know. How many single-family units, Brennan?
Chair Supervisor Goodman, although I did not represent TriPoint, who is the developer of that, I believe that they are approximately 150 to 160 single-family residences. If you'll, if I need to get a more exact detail, I'll scurry through my notes, but that's an approximation.
Okay, thank you. The other part is, is, is I think I asked staff to get, to come up with some areas that have already been zoned for these type of projects already in the Santan Valley area. So I think you did that, correct?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Goodman. Per your request, we actually work with the assessor's office to show areas with MD zoning or multiple, multiple residence zoning or MR. Now, not all these projects have been built yet. As a matter of fact, I think there's only a couple of these that have been built. But as you can tell, this is the density of those types of projects as it pertains specifically to what we define as Santan Valley in orange and in blue.
And Chairman Supervisor Goodman, if I may, just for the record, this map has been included on the actual agenda.
So this particular project is included on this particular map? Is that what I'm understanding?
No. For the record, I just wanted to state that this map that was provided and the map that is being presented on the screen is a part of today's record.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
To answer your question, Mr. Goodman, I don't believe this project is included on this map because it doesn't have approved zoning.
Because it's not approved as of yet.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. All right. And the reason why I bring this up is that, and this is something that I would like us to do, I, I constantly get calls on the amount of car washes we have. And so, and so I think this would be beneficial to give some of the developers and those that are desiring to do these type of projects, if they have a general idea of where this is at. And I'm, I'm appreciative of Leo, what you showed earlier, that we have through our economic development website now, that they can actually do the research themselves, and it shows all these locations. I think it's also good for us as board members that we see what's coming down the pipeline and for our public as well, so they can see this and weigh in on some of these things. So kudos to our staff for doing that. You know, these particular projects right here, I, I think the applicant himself is here, correct? Mr. Gansel, you're here, correct? Oh, no, okay. Oh, he's back there, all right. And Mike, you've been out there for longer than most of these people, haven't you?
Seven years.
So I, you know, I don't know Mike personally, but I, I've heard his name quite a bit, and he's, he's a big reason, him and the Schness and Sossamans and the Barneys and the Nevitz is the reason why a lot of us are out in this area right now. I came out here in 1980. You were talking about urbanization. I came here in 1980, and there's a dairy that used to sit on Jermaine and Meridian Road. And I helped build that dairy and stayed on there for another seven, eight years. And so I've seen what's happening here. My wife and I just recently bought, well, back in 2010, we bought where we currently live, which is a suburban, I mean, a ranchette, much like yours, right off of Redfern Road. And when we bought that, it was, my kids couldn't afford it today. You know, you talk about your, your generation being able to come in and buy one of these with the prices the way they are right now. There's, unless they're doing something really good financially, they can't even afford some of these locations that we're talking about. We're seeing that in the housing industry as well. That's one of the reasons why some of these projects are coming before us as we look at these things. So these are some of the things that I'm just weighing in on here. But there are some interesting questions I want to ask of our staff and, and so on and so forth, because the amount of traffic, and I've always said, my biggest thing sitting on this board is traffic, because it's going to be increased. What are we doing to mitigate the traffic and the safety issues that goes along with that? And the other type amenities that would go along with that. We have a high retail leakage that's leaving this general area. We all know that. And so we, we need to reverse a lot of this. Now, I know this is residential property, and we've already established that it could be eight units per the acre under the current scenario. So we're actually increasing it to 9.47 if we approve this today. But I want to talk about the traffic issues. Is the comment?
You mentioned three issues?
Yes.
Safety and open space, right?
Yes.
For traffic is Chris, and as far as I've talked to him earlier, it's about 3% increase, but Chris can verify that?
Yeah, if we could talk about, what does that mean in numbers? I mean, 3%, it's one thing. Many of us that drive out there, it's already pretty dang crowded. We all realize that and recognize, and that's one of the biggest concerns that everybody has here.
So good afternoon, Chairman Supervisor Goodman. So when we're talking about traffic, right now, the numbers show that we're seeing about 14,000 or so cars per day on Ocatillo through this intersection of Kenworthy and Ocatillo. This project will increase the traffic at that intersection by 3% according to the traffic report that was provided. Overall, increase in traffic is just under 10% of what's there today. The 225 units are estimated to generate about 1,500 additional trips per day. So that works out to 10% when you do the math over the 15,000 trips per day on Ocatillo.
Okay. And then if I might, Mr. Chair, on Ocatillo and Kenworthy, is there a four-way stoplight? Is there a stoplight that's going to go there?
So there is a traffic signal plan there. Unfortunately, as you know, with the growth happening in all of Santan Valley, we've, we've got a number of signals that need to be installed all throughout the community. I think our five-year plan has 14 or so. The challenge is funding a signal at any given location. So this particular one is probably two to three years out. If this project were to be approved and we were to get some money, it may happen sooner. Hopefully would have to happen sooner. So, like, I think I mentioned, there's 14 traffic signals that are needed in Santan Valley right now, and we're trying to get as many installed as we can.
Okay, how about the widening of Ocatillo?
Yeah, so they'll be widening and putting in the ultimate improvements to add their additional lanes. Now, one thing that was mentioned is the future county parkway and SR24 extension. So in the future, we'll have, the county will have to do a project where we will widen the remainder of Ocatillo Road to get that traffic over to the new parkway. This project will be putting in their half-sheet improvements, which will add capacity and be a contribution to the overall system long-term.
So engineering-wise, what are we looking at? Five lanes? Two on each side with a turn lane, or what are we looking at?
Ocatillo, it should be seven-lane facility in the, at the ultimate section. So what they're, they're putting in their frontage will be two additional lanes plus a turn lane.
Okay. And to, you know, and I, this is something that has been pretty difficult for this board is, I'm sorry, but we've become urbanized. We have. And I've made that comment several times at this pulpit because we have, over the years, and even before many of us that are sitting on this board, that process was done years ago, 20 years ago, the process of taking this and making it an urban community. And so now we're faced with, how do we mitigate our traffic issues and everything else to that nature in these rural communities? I feel for you. You're one of my brothers and sisters. And so I feel for what the, what the issue is and what the concern is. Now, my next question. We've had to deal with many issues in these rural areas when it comes to traffic calming. Is there some additional things, for instance, on Kenworthy that can be done to help calm the traffic?
Chairman Supervisor, this is a great question. So as you know, the traffic concerns in the rural ranchette area is something that we've been working on for well over a year. We're actually moving forward with the installation of speed humps on one particular street in this ranchette community, Friend Avenue, that will, happening in the next month or two. We've got a number of other locations we're looking at. Now, going back to Kenworthy, that is also something we are looking at. We're probably going to be making some changes to some intersections north of this project, converting them to all-way stops, which will help break up the traffic and slow things down a little bit. And this is a continual thing, where we monitor it and make changes and try to implement traffic calming measures to keep the speeds down, maybe deter, cut, cut through traffic, that kind of thing. So it's, it's a continued effort.
Okay. So with that, with that, I just want to take it a step further. Many of these projects that come in to this area change the dynamics quite a bit. What kind of contribution do they make regionally? And this would be that scenario, Kenworthy, putting calming traffic, being able to, you know, something, whatever it's going to be, whether it's a speed bump or, what, what's another one that they don't? They're not speed bumps, they're less?
Speed tables.
Speed tables. And I use Queen Creek as an example of this. On the west side of Ellsworth Road and Jermaine, they've taken that entire community and they've put in steep, uh, speed tables to help soften and reduce the speed in that rural community. And they've done a very well, a very good job. Is that something that we have in the plans? Is that something that the developer would be willing to do?
So, so we have not had those discussions with this developer as far as implementing any traffic calming measures, and that's not something that normally is, is done, that i- is something that we typically employ afterwards as a mitigation measure to help calm or reduce the effects of, of, of traffic. This is certainly something we can entertain when we continue the discussions with this developer. The traffic report is not approved yet. We're still working through several things. So this is something we can add to the discussion. As of right now, this developer, they are providing their half-sheet improvements on all adjacent streets and contribution to the signal, which will improve safety and add capacity to compensate for the additional traffic.
Okay. And I think that's something that really needs to be addressed and looked at, even if this is approved. These type of calming things have to be done for our rural communities. They, we have to do this. And the bottom line is, they do impact what's going on right now. And so some of the cost of those things, we're going back and cleaning up what, what was missed. And I think it's time that we start planning ahead and looking ahead, that when developers come in with these kind of pro, project, that's part of the stipulation. Now, I do, what about the $4 million that was brought up earlier? Is that about right for what they're doing in that corner?
I, I can't speak to the exact cost of what these improvements are, but it, it sounds reasonable, given the amount of work that needs, that they're proposing to do and given recent prices for paving and stuff. So it's quite a substantial.
Yeah.
Well, that's right. And Brett brought to my attent, attention that the developer will also have to pay impact fees, which is above and beyond that $4 million improvement. And that's on a per-unit basis at the time of building permit. So, and, and those impact fees go to pay for additional regional impacts to, like, road improvements, traffic signals, and also subsidizes the sheriff's office and, and several other things.
Okay. Just one more comment, if I could, or, and something to really consider, this board as a whole and even the community as a whole. Mr. Gansel's been out there for some time, and he'd probably like to start to enjoy life a little bit. And so when he bought a lot of this property and things of that nature, you know, to, and he's got somebody that came to him and to buy this, we, we came across a situation like this not too long ago where, um, that was a particular situation. So anyway, these are private properties. That's the one thing, just like it's your private property too. So anyway, that's, that's all I have to say at this point.
All right. Any other questions for me, Chairman?
Doesn't look like it.
Thank you.
I just want to editorialize for a little bit. We're not supposed to explain our votes when we vote, but I agree with a lot of the folks in the audience, especially one, I was going to bring up the point. And Mr. Goodman, you don't even know this, I had a meeting at your office yesterday, and then I went to a restaurant on Ironwood and Ocatillo. I had an accident because I couldn't cross the road. There's so much traffic there. I just wasn't going to make it across, so I made a poor judgment. I said, I'll go down this way. And it, it's just horrible over there. And we're adding 500 more cars. And I think right now, the population is probably about 120,000 people in this area. And we're, it's not, nobody's leaving. What happens when it gets to 200,000? What happens when it gets to 300,000? It just can't handle that. If people want to live in apartments, there's plenty of apartments in Mesa and Gilbert. They should probably move over there. But also, the reason I asked, when was this all started? And it was started about two years ago, but I'm kind of sending notice to any developer that unless it's already started, I'm, I'm not going to vote yes anymore after this. I mean, we just don't need this type of thing out here. So it's got to stop somewhere, and it's got to start soon until we can catch up with roads. The project we just approved a little bit ago with the shopping, that's great. It'd be great if there was more shopping out here, and it seems like there's enough people, so. But I am also cognizant that this was started a while, so if it's already on the books, maybe finish it, but let's, let's put an end to it soon.
Chairman?
Yes.
If I may, Supervisor Kavanaugh's staff had a question for Brent, and he's going to address that question now.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, members of, of the board, if you recall the Hancock Homes case that was heard by this board about three months ago, there was a state statute that was called into question regarding opposition and present percentages of property owners that we have received opposition from and whether or not that requires a supermajority vote of the board when a zoning decision is made. In this case, I asked staff to do that level of analysis based on, on the opposition for this case, and staff has determined that, that, that 20% threshold has not been met with respect to this case under the state law, if, if, if that pleases the board.
That's a great question. Anyone else?
If, if I may, Mr. Goodman had a couple more questions, one about safety and one about open space. I cannot speak about safety. Probably the sheriff would be the most, the most relevant one to speak about safety. But about open space and the code requirements for open space for these type of projects have all been met. I have to say, the code requires different types, different, has different requirements for planning area developments for single-family and different requirements for multifamily. So for multifamily are different. So if in the future we require more open space for multifamily, that's something that could be addressed in the code.
Say that again?
Yes.
Yes, okay. We have PADs here. There's PADs for multifamily projects, like subdivisions, for example, and the code requires an 18% of open space within there. And there's special, there, there are specific requirements regarding amenities and other, and other areas to be provided. Now, when it comes to multifamily, the requirements are different. There's no requirements for amenities and/or other larger types of open spaces. So that's what I'm trying to say. But the, the project follows the code the way it is right now.
Yep. Mr. Miller?
So if you can put the map back up that shows the, this project is a little yellow spot in the middle of the great big Santan area. So the density in in the middle of the great big Santan area. So, the density in there, I mean, is pretty high. I mean, and all of this stuff is market-driven. It's the market. If people wanted suburban ranches and were lined up to buy them, that's what would be selling. That's how, you know, that's how land and development goes, where the money goes. I mean, and I don't, I just don't see, I mean, filling out that corner with all that density around it is going to change that much. The traffic is a whole nother issue. We have a society that doesn't want to be taxed for transportation improvements. And I guess what we can do is increase the impact fees to throw more money towards the transportation. But that is just a cost that goes on to the cost of the house. It's, you know, the developer doesn't pay that, the buyer of the home will pay that, or the developer of a multifamily facility like this. Again, I, you know, I've got to believe that the developer has done a market study. They've probably analyzed where they think they can optimize, and I have no problem with people making a profit. They should. Capitalism is how this country has become great. So, if I wanted, if I lived in Casa Grande when there was only 9,000 people, there's almost 60,000 people now. Things have changed, and they will continue to change. If there's any one thing that remains the same, it's change. And I just don't see where, I think if the gentleman wants to develop this piece of property there, and he's met all the criteria that the staff has put before him, I have a hard time voting against it. I don't like heavy traffic either. But I've been working for 50 years to get I-10 widened, and it ain't widened. It ain't going to widen. It's not going to widen until someone in Washington, DC decides to widen it. So, I don't know. We can get all excited about all kinds of things here. But, you know, again, if we don't like, if we don't like the standards that we've put before these projects and ask people to do certain things, and they've met all that criteria, we just have to, we should honor our word on this. So, that's my thoughts.
Mr. Chair, I have a question. So, mention was, or there was a mention of the north-south Parkway, and that would be about two miles to the west of this, or two and a half miles to the, or to the east of this, rather. And it would be coming down to, the first stage is set to come to Alcatillo. That's correct, down from the 24 individual. And that's a few years off, but that's coming. And then Alcatillo would be widened at that point to, did I hear, seven lanes?
Mr. Wanamaker.
Chairman, Supervisor, yes, we would have to implement a project to widen that east-west connection to get people to the new Parkway. That's a project that would have to happen afterwards. So, same thing with Combs Road, which we're actually undertaking a portion of Combs right now, but Alcatillo would have to come soon thereafter.
So, the larger picture, is it all this is going to get widened, and we're going to move more traffic through there?
Yes. So, once we have this north-south connection, this Parkway, the traffic dynamics in this entire area should change. Whereas, right now, the majority of traffic is going west into Maricopa to get to work, to get to wherever they need to go. The traffic pattern will suddenly change to go east to get to the Parkway, which is limited access, high-speed facility that can get you into the Phoenix area much quicker with less, less stops. So, we expect that to have a big positive impact on this area.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I have a question for our staff. And that is, can they expand on the reasons our planning and zoning crew worked against this?
The full narrative of the Planning and Zoning Commission has been submitted in the packet, the full conversation. I can speak out of my memory right now. The main concern was that this was not fit for the suburban style of living in that area.
Mr. Miller?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a question on that, on that hearing, though. Was it, my understanding that not everybody was present, that there was a, people were trying to participate via telephone on the road, there were breaks, they had to stop because they didn't have a quorum, and then they got hooked back up? I mean, that is a disaster waiting to happen and should not be allowed. So, I don't know, I mean, if there, I mean, I don't have a problem if you're at your computer and you want to participate that way. But driving a car and trying to make decisions on this type of stuff via a cellphone is not acceptable, in my opinion.
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Miller, you are correct. When it came time to start that meeting, we did not have a quorum. I changed the process after we did not have a quorum in October to where we call and notify the P&amp;Z members and verify their attendance prior to meetings. We did not think we were going to have an issue with a quorum at that meeting. From what I understand, a couple of contributing factors existed. We had some open spots on P&amp;Z. Number two, a couple of the folks thought they were going to be able to communicate remotely. That happened to be, that were out of state, were out of town, that they couldn't make it work. You're absolutely correct. We then had to call the remaining Planning and Zoning Commission members to ask them if they could participate so that we had a quorum. One of those individuals is on vacation, driving a car, and was going in and out of coverage. So, we had to pause the meeting when, when we lost that individual so that we had a quorum. You're absolutely correct.
Yeah. Well, and I apologize to the applicant for that circus. That is just not very professional. So, anyway, that's my thoughts.
Anyone else? So, we're getting closer to votes. So, Evan, can you explain why the three votes and what each one does in a brief synopsis?
They're all recommendations. And on the first vote, on the PZPA 01322, there was a draw in the beginning, three to three, and then it was decided that...
I'm meaning right now, when we, what are the three votes? What does each...
What we're voting on?
Oh, yes, yes. I'm sorry. I thought you were asking me to explain the P&amp;Z vote. We're voting for a Santan Valley amendment, comprehensive plan amendment, Santan Plan Area Comprehensive Plan Amendment, minor. We are voting for a rezoning from the current zoning to MR.
That's 15. So, the first one was changing, yeah.
And then we are, we are voting for the PAD, for the rezoning overlay, which amends basically the standards and adapts the project to the needs of both the applicant and the county. That's what a PAD is overall, I'm just explaining.
So, if any one of these is defeated, does that stop the project?
If the first one is defeated, PZPA 01322, then the project stops because the applicant cannot go above eight developing units per acre. If the first one passes and the second one is defeated, then the applicant can reapply and come in again with an updated project. The same thing with the third one.
If we approve the first one, does that change the whole area or only this parcel?
Only this parcel.
Okay. Hopefully, that was helpful. So... If no further discussion, I'll ask for a motion on 14.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve item number 14 as presented with no stipulations.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Nay.
Wait, we had an aye here. Okay. And then opposed would be nays. And did I hear a no, Mr. Nay Kavanaugh?
Yes. Mine is a nay.
I'm going to be a nay also. Number 15. That passes, though, right? Since there's no super...
Yes, Chairman, that does pass. It's three to two.
15 is their motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve item number 15. It's presented with one stipulation.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And opposed? I'll be a no. Four to one?
Yes, Chairman, that is correct. Four to one, that motion does pass.
And then on number 16, is there a motion?
Chairman, before we take that motion, if we can hear from Brent.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, during the applicant's presentation, they mentioned that they would like to add an additional stipulation to those stipulations that are included in the packet. And Brennan briefly described what that was. If it pleases you, I will read their proposed stipulation. I will tell you that we have reviewed it from a staff perspective. If you choose to add it, that we would support the, I guess I should say, we neither support or don't support the stipulation. It's, we leave it up to you guys whether you think that's appropriate. But from what we understand, the stipulation was put together to assist some of the concerns with the property owners. Would you like me to read it into the record?
Yes.
I have to move back because I can't see. "The property owner or multifamily apartment manager shall display in a conspicuous place within the rental office a map illustrating the location of the development in the context of existing properties on the eastern and southern borders that are zoned for commercial agricultural uses, including raising and marketing of poultry, rabbits, small animals, and raising livestock, and that such agricultural activities may result in the generation of dust, flies, odors, noise, and other nuisances typically associated with a commercial agricultural use. The map shall be minimum size of 24 inches by 36 inches. Compliance with this condition shall be demonstrated by the property owner or multifamily apartment manager submitting to the Community Development Director a signed affidavit and photograph that acknowledges the map is on display prior to the beginning of any rental activity."
Okay. Is there a motion on 16? Do you have a question?
Just a question. Is there, is there a way that we can add another stipulation to this, such as the calming, traffic calming?
I'm not with the attorney's office, but from my years of experience, I think that causes some confusion in terms of staff's inability to review, legal inability to review. And typically, when you add a new stipulation that's unrelated to the application, you have to remand back to the P&amp;Z. But I will, I will allow our attorney to address that one.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I think a stipulation, stipulations can be modified within reason, and typically additional ones can be added. But I would second Brent's concerns about the review time. And, and there is that, that idea that the board could desire to have a, the P&amp;Z weigh in on that, that new commission, that new stipulation, if that's something the board would like to do.
Mr. Miller?
If I may, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Maybe that's, maybe that's something that should be added to our subdivision development, you know, if a traffic impact study says volumes are increased by this much, that would be a consideration for a, an added stipulation in the future. I think it might be a little hard on this one on the fly, but I, I mean, I don't think it's a bad idea. I just think that might be a better path in which to have that included in future development.
I agree.
So, Mr. Chair, with that, with that comment, is that a way that even in the final development agreement, can that be stipulated and put in there as well? Is those issues, can they be addressed at that point?
Well, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, there, there won't be a development agreement on this particular project, but, yeah.
However, between my department and Chris's group, once again, Chris said that the traffic study hasn't approved yet. So, it's been made publicly known today that this is a concern that the board has. I think we can address that in terms of the site plan submittal and ultimately the engineering documents.
Okay. And if I might, one more. Make sure that that, whatever your traffic report shows, that includes all of, all the way down Kenworthy at different points, because you and I both know that they're going to go the least resistance when they go anywhere. Anybody right now, that's been part of our problem, is we've had so much construction and accidents and things of that nature, that people go where the area of least resistance, and they a lot of times drive like a bat out of hell in these subdivisions. And so, especially in these ranchettes. And so, if you could really hone in on that and do that, I'd appreciate it. And so, so would the neighbors.
Okay. Are we ready for a motion on 16? We already heard the stipulation.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve item number 16, approve the, with, I don't know how you want me to word this, with 18, or do you want me to go 17 plus the stipulation that was read in?
Yep.
On...
Stipulation.
Okay. Presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission, approve the, presented with the 17 stipulations presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission, plus an additional 18th stipulation as read into the record. So, there.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? And that one is unanimous. Okay, on to number 17. Discussion approval, disapproval of a 7.9% increase for medical plans. Mary Ellen?
Chair.
Or Angeline?
Chairman?
Yes.
Before we go to item number 17, Supervisor Goodman, did you want to do your recommendation for item number D on the consent agenda today?
You know, and that completely, if that's okay, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
He's here now. Mr. Erickson, he's the new, I've got one of my members that's needing to resign his position as one of the Planning and Zoning Commission, Mr. Erickson, before he leaves. Mr. Erickson, Evan, can you grab Pat?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I didn't get a chance to acknowledge Mr. Erickson. He, he's accepted taking and filling the position of the new vacancy that's coming up. And I just wanted to publicly give you my appreciation to that. I think we have a certificate.
I wondered why he wore a tie.
No, he'd come up here and present this.
He had a job interview.
I'm ready for Chinese food.
You're only thing paid today.
I'm going to stay right in the middle.
And looking right here, we're really happy about this. Three, two, and again, one more. Bigger smile. There we go. And one more. Thank you.
Okay, I already introduced number 17, and Angie is here.
Thank you, Chairman, sorry, members of the board. Angie Woods, Director of the Office...
Angie Woods, Director of the Office of Budget and Finance. Item number seventeen before you today is, we're requesting approval of an increase of 7.9% to our fiscal year 23, 24 medical plans contributions as recommended by our Pinell County Health Benefits Trust Board. Our trust board met a couple of times in the last month. And on February the fourteenth, they approved this recommendation for the increase. The recommended increase is a result of an analysis of prior year claims, adjusted for projected increases in the next year. And those increases are projected for medical costs of claims due to market trends. I attached the analysis that was provided by C-Biz, our consultant, and I'll entertain any questions if you have any.
Is there any questions?
General, Mr. Chair, generally, I, sorry, I didn't get to look at all that, but what is a 7.9% increase roughly?
In the cost to?
Dollars.
Dollars. So in the sense of the cost in dollars to the entire plan, about one and a half million dollars to the entire plan.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions or comments? And I'll ask for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we approve item number seventeen as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? So, looks like it passes. Number eighteen, and that's gonna be Angie again, discussion approval for health benefit increases again.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I've asked for this item to be withdrawn from the agenda for today, and we'll be bringing this item back in a future agenda.
Okay. So this is withdrawn then, so there's no need for any vote?
Chairman, if we can vote, normally it is not required to vote, but at our last meeting, we did make a motion to withdraw, and we did vote so for consistency. If we can make and take an action on it to withdraw the item.
Can I have that motion then?
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we withdraw item number eighteen.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That one carries. Number nineteen, discussion approval or disapproval of part-time employees and their benefits.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This agenda item is to request your approval to include part-time employees working nineteen to 29.99 hours on our medical benefit plans beginning July first of 2023. This item was also discussed by our Health Benefits Trust Board, and they, they recommended approval again on February fourteenth of this year. Inclusion of part-time employees in the medical benefit plans will help the county with recruitment and retention efforts by becoming competitive with other entities that offer this benefit to their part-time employees already. So some of the, the research that has been done, other entities that may, that were really challenged, you know, competitive with already provide this to part-time employees, or were wanting to at least provide the same benefit to those part-time employees here. Currently, there are twenty-five general fund and sixteen non-general fund part-time positions budgeted in the fiscal year 22, 23. Of those forty-one positions that were budgeted, eighteen general fund positions and eleven non-general fund positions are currently filled with employees. So those twenty-nine part-time employees will be evaluated and may become eligible in July if they are working the required number of hours. I wanted to kind of let you know that between the Human Resources Department, my Budget Office, and the County Managers Office, we currently monitor and control the number of part-time, full-time positions that are created, or even control and monitor the number of part-time, uh, full-time positions that could be converted to part-time positions. And I'm, I'm telling you this because through that review process, we're, we're going to monitor and ensure that we are controlling and potentially limiting the, the claim costs to those plans for additional part-time positions. And then, in addition to that, control future contribution increases just by pure limiting or controlling those number of employees or part-time employees that would be added.
Mr. Chair, could I ask a question?
Yes.
Did I understand you to say that you're looking, in your desktop analysis, that you're looking to see which, which employees can be part-time rather than full-time? Is that?
No, which part-time employees that are in those part-time positions that we are currently employed? Well, they'll, HR will have to do an analysis of those people, how many hours they're actually working to identify whether or not they're working the nineteen to 29.99 hours currently in order to become eligible for these benefits.
Okay, I just misunderstood, thank you.
Sorry about that. And that's all I really have for today, if you have any questions.
Are there any more questions? And I'll ask for a motion.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I would move that we approve item nineteen as stated.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Looks unanimous. Number twenty is a work session item. And it is regarding keeping things from coming before us and having them go to boards of adjustment instead. So if you could explain that, Brent Millensley.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Before I start, the clerk has asked me to make a statement, and that is that the presentation that will be presented has been provided to the clerk of the board for her record. Is that good? Awesome. Starting off good. So as, as you guys know, several months ago, Mr. Lou, Manager Lou, came, came to me and said, we need to take a look at the hearing rules. Please work with our, our, our legal department, the County Attorney's Office, to take a closer look at those rules and look as to comparisons with other counties in how they handle cases that are appealed from the Hearing Division. So staff did several things. Number one, when it came time to, to look at the hearing rules themselves, they're somewhat dated, they have outdated references, they're from a number of years ago. Legislation has changed, but also processes have been modified in, in terms of how things are handled. So we, we took a close look at it, but we also made comparisons to, to other counties. And based on some of the work that, that our HR group has been doing, we're doing a lot of comparisons with Maricopa County, and, and they've got some good things in place. So we kind of compared how we were looking at things more specifically with Maricopa County. And what we realized is we had outdated references. One example here has to do with our animal control ordinance, which has been updated. We had some timeframes that were incongruous with some of our, our partners in, in the county realm and how they handled their, their hearing offices. And then lastly, and perhaps most importantly with respect to this discussion, is taking appeals from the Hearing Office instead of to the Board of Supervisors, to the Board of Adjustment. One of the questions that we got from, from a board member recently was, what do the other counties do? And we actually had quite a bit of difficulty getting these answers. I reached out to the planning directors and got one response. Allen reached out to the County Attorney's Offices twice, and I think he got two responses. So I actually asked my staff to make a, a series of phone calls. So we spent a lot of hours calling the other counties to, to try and see if we can't get in touch with the right person and, and figure out how they handle this process. And what we've been able to determine is about 57% of the counties in, in Arizona actually have the Board of Adjustment here their civil, civil hearing appeals. One of the prevailing factors in that is that the Board of Adjustment is already, as defined in state statute, a quasi-judicial body. They're, they're a judicial body, whereas, say, our Planning and Zoning Commission is, is a legislative body under statute. So, so it's, it's, it's a good fit. The next question that we received is, talk to us a little bit about our, our Board of Adjustment. Well, it's, it's a five-member board, and we've got the appointees from each district listed here. Now, one of these individuals is, is up for reappointment, and from what I understand, is, is going to be reappointed. So I, I don't see any turnover in this group. In order to get to this, this point, I'm sure some of the board members are thinking, why is it taking so long to get here? Well, number one, we, we went through the review process and looked at edits and parity with, with other counties. Number two, there's a legal review that's part of that. But I think one of the things that's, that's most important to share is there's also a hearing process, like any ordinance change that we have to go through, which included an initiation at the Planning and Zoning Commission, public hearing at the Planning and Zoning Commission, and ultimately a vote before we could get to today. Today is not for a vote. Statute requires us to do a, a hearing-type presentation first in terms of, of a work session item, and then we bring it back at a later time for, for an actual vote. So I hope that explains that. I'll turn it over to Allen.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Allen Quist with the County Attorney's Office. Brent asked that I share with the board some of the legal considerations associated with the proposed updates to the County Civil Hearing Office rules. The primary update, of course, as Brent discussed, is shifting these civil hearing office appeals from being heard by, by you, the Board of Supervisors, to the Board of Adjustment. If the board desires to make this change, it has clear statutory authority to do so. And that statutory authority is found as presented here in ARS 11-815-816. Now, these two statutes were revised in 2000, around 2011. That was when Maricopa County actually petitioned the state legislature to enact these changes, to give them the discretion to send these appeals to the Board of Adjustment. While I can't speak exactly to what Maricopa County's rationale was for championing that, that legislation, legislative change, I can say, I can echo what, what Brent noted, that the Board of Adjustment, also known as the Board of Adjustment and Appeals, is a quasi-judicial entity that's currently hearing variances. They're hearing interpretations of our code, which are traditionally judicial-type hearings. So there, there's that element of it. I can say that having attended planning, the Board of Adjustment meetings for the past couple of years, that they meet once a month, and it's not unusual to have two or three items on their agenda. And in fact, sometimes meetings are canceled because there's just no, no business for the Board of Adjustment to conduct that particular month. So it appears that there, there would be capacity for the Board of Adjustment to handle these, these appeals. So that's as to this, this shift to the Board of Adjustment, these appeals. And, and again, this is entirely within your discretion, Board of Supervisors discretion. That discretion was given to you by the state legislature. In addition, as Brent noted, other changes were made throughout the, the Hearing Office rules to update them. You have the red line in your packet. I can go over some of the, some of those big changes if you'd like, or answer specific questions, whatever the, the board would prefer.
Well, do we prefer this as work session, so just feel free to discuss freely.
I'm glad to see these changes coming. I think it's a, it's not a waste of our time, but it's, but it's not our real job to be quasi-judicial here. You know, this is more of a legislative, ministerial job. So I look forward to the change.
I come from a city where this happened also, and a lot of time, this is their folks' last resort. I mean, you really can't go beyond Board of Adjustment. This is, this is it.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, so there, there are appeal rights from the Board of Adjustment's decision as well. That can be appealed through an administrative appeal process. So there, there is one more step along the road after that. And the same goes for when, when you hear appeals from the Civil Hearing Office, those as well can be appealed. So there are additional checks and balances in place, if that is a concern.
Mr. Chairman, have you, thank you, Mr. Chairman, have you discussed this with the Board of Appeals? Guys, or people?
That's a good question, Mr... Okay, yeah, we, we have, the department, not unlike what Manager Leo does, gives an update to, to the board and the board, at the Board of Adjustment. Todd Williams has provided them with updates saying that this is working its way through the process. I think the department's intent is to hold some sort of training or, or some sort of discussion with them about the law and how, and how this will play out and, and what their role would, would be.
Well, that, that would be my, my next question. No one toss these guys into the lion's den right out, right out of the chute. But I, I think it's a good move. And certainly, if it doesn't work out, I guess we can always bring, bring it back. But at this point, I think we ought to give it a chance. Yeah, I am. I've got a terrible headache. Anyway.
All right.
Hear what I said?
Well, this is, this is a work session only, so we'll have time to think about it in between before we come back with decisions.
And just to reiterate, there are, there are additional changes that were made, and if, if the board would like any briefing on those, I'm more than happy to do that as well to, to the rules, some clean-up, some changes to the, relatively minor in nature, but I can't give a summary of those if the board would like, or take questions.
I'd hear your changes, I mean, what were your minor changes? If everybody?
Here's, here's a list of some of the, the changes. Briefly, number one would be making the rules more in line with the Arizona Rules of Civil Procedure in the sense that to, to get into the Hearing Office, a person has to be served with the complaint. This rule provides for two avenues by which service could essentially be waived. Right now, it can be waived if someone signs a waiver. Now, under this rule, it would also say service would be waived. If someone appears at the Hearing Office and makes arguments and presents their case and defends themselves, they can't later go back and say, oh, but I wasn't properly served. If they want to raise the sufficiency of service, they have to do that as their first step in the process, right? So that, that's in keeping with how Arizona courts rule as far as challenging service. So that's, that's making the, the rules more in line with the rules of civil procedure. Number two is that complaints can now be amended to include additional charges. Due to the nature of, of these civil hearings, properties, it's constantly changing. It's pretty fluid what's happening on the property. So this would make it so that code enforcement doesn't have to go back and get a new complaint, you know, on the second or third hearing, if this thing's being continued, to add an additional charge and serve the person again. Now they can add that to the complaint. Three involves some changes to the rules governing notification of attorney involvement at the civil hearing and appeal stages. There was previously some language about persons waiving their right to an attorney at these hearings if they didn't provide notification within a certain period of time. We decided to, to eliminate those provisions and just make the remedy be that the county could ask for continuance, that no one's waiving their right to an attorney just by not providing that, that notice within 15 days. The purpose of that rule is if there is an attorney involved on the other side, our department wants the opportunity to bring in our department wants the opportunity to bring in attorneys from the County Attorney's Office to represent the county, because we typically are not at, at these hearings at this stage. So those were some modifications there. Four, requests to set aside civil hearing defaults must now be made within 30 days as opposed to six months. And again, that's, that's in a desire to get the cases moving a little more quickly and not having a, a civil hearing office decision be challenged while we're, when we're already in Superior Court, let's say. So six months is a long time to have a case be in, be in limbo. Let's see. Five. This rule, again incorporates some of the language from the Arizona Rules of Civil Procedure. It's geared at, at trying to instill on, on the civil hearing officers their duty to reach speedy but just determinations to, to exclude evidence that's irrelevant where necessary in order to, to keep the cases moving. Number six is, this actually comes from a recommendation from Mr. Mo Glancy, who performed an audit of the Community Development Department. He recommended that the county start a process of, consider starting a process of recording violation notices after the civil hearing office makes its decision. And so we incorporate some language in the rules to, to effectuate that. And it's, it's modeled largely of, after Maricopa County's process. And then I think there was one more. We did extend the oral argument portion of these appeals from five to 10 minutes so that the, some additional time can, can be, be taken at the Board of Adjustment level to hear, to fully hear these, these appeals. So those, it's kind of a big overview of, of the changes, the cleanup that was made to, to some of these other rules sprinkled throughout the civil hearing office rules.
Okay. So we'll ponder this and we'll look for this again. Okay.
Thanks, Mr. Quest.
Any future agenda items someone would like to see? So hearing, seeing none, we will be adjourned.